December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember DeHart.
Here.
Councilmember Hostage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Garner.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. So at this time, we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And the pledge today will be led by Olivia Lee Sanchez. She is seven years old and a first grader at Katherine Finchey Elementary School. She loves to read. She reads at a third grade level. She loves doing crafts, playing with makeup, coloring, and painting. She enjoys watching the History Channel, loves playing circle dodgeball, and her favorite subject is steam. And when she grows up, and this is a direct quote, "She wants to be a mayor just like Mayor Garner and have curly hair just like her." So thank you so much, Olivia, for doing the pledge for us today because that is a great way to end my last day as mayor. So can you come up? You speak into the microphone, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Olivia. All right. So very shortly, we are going to swear in our new mayor. But first, I just have a few comments to share with the public. I thought for a long time about writing something down. Jeffrey asked me if I was gonna do a highlight of all of the things that we've accomplished in this year. And every time I tried to sit down to write something, just nothing came out. So I decided that I would just talk to you all as I felt and just from the heart. It has been such an honor to be the mayor this year. This is my hometown. Now, I'm a second-generation resident, and we were actually thinking about it today. And I think I might be one of the only ones to be mayor that was born and raised in Palm Springs. We're not sure yet. We're looking into it. But it hasn't been that many, if, if at all. And that's really what's been so special to me because I've always been interested in politics. I've always been interested in serving my community, my country, and to be able to do that in my hometown is truly the biggest honor of my life. And doing things like this, thank you. Inviting our students into chambers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance is an idea that I've had for a long time. It's something that I would have loved to do as a child here in Palm Springs, and I wanted to be able to pass that on. I spend a lot of time going to our schools of all different, all of our different schools and talking to our kids and making sure that they understand that City Hall is here for them, the city is here for them, just like it is for all of you who attend our meetings on a regular basis. I love that our chambers say that the people are the city because you are. You are what makes it special and beautiful and what makes this such an honor. I'm proud of, of all that we've done in this city. I've told folks many times before that when I was in high school here, it wasn't as LGBT-friendly as it is now. At that time, I never in my life would have thought that I would have served on a council that was majority LGBT. And now that I am, that's another great honor. And I, I'm so proud of this city and all that we've accomplished and that we continue to strive to be better, that we continue to hold up human rights as something that we care about, that we are always working to be better than we were the day before. And I know that Jeffrey, or Mayor Pro Tem Jeffrey, is going to do a fabulous job as mayor. I've had the pleasure of meeting with him every week this year, and I know that his heart is in the right place and that he is enthusiastic about the city just like I am. And that he brings a different perspective than me. And it's a perspective of a small business owner and someone that chose to have Palm Springs as their home. I didn't choose to be born here. I was just lucky. But I... But all of you who have decided to make Palm Springs your home because you've seen what a beautiful city it is and what a beautiful community it is, I really thank you for choosing to be here with all of us. So if you do want to update about what we did this year, you can watch The State of the City. I'm not gonna go over it, Jeffrey. But thank you all. It's been an honor and a pleasure. And you will see me a little bit less in public next year, but I will be diving in to all of our agendas, and I will be talking a lot more on this dais than I did this year. So thank you all very much. Sure. All right, we've got a councilmember Hostage wants to say something.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's so hard to follow the mayor and the outgoing mayor, but I made this mistake last time of not saying thanks to the mayor when Jeff Coors left council and we wanted to thank him. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity on behalf of the council and the community to thank you for your service. You've been an incredible mayor. I've been able to be in this city and have served now, I think, with four different mayors of Palm Springs. And I think you've done just the best job I've ever seen. It's been incredible to see you lead with the love that you have for the community. And I do think it's unique to watch someone lead their hometown and really be that role model for students in our schools and watching you and coming to council every single day. I love that you've implemented that, to have students involved in the city's work and to see that, see you leading. And you've just led with such grace. Your parents named you appropriately because the way you've given to this city has been really incredible. And I know it hasn't been easy. You led during Tropical Storm Hillary. You, I will never forget, you canceled a planned trip to stay here and bag sand with our residents, and you were covered in sand and just doing it for hours and hours to make sure our residents were safe with historic flooding that was happening. And you were here to rebuild. You were able to walk the governor through our city operations, and I know he was amazed at our city operation and the response of uncertainty and potential tragedy. And you led us with such grace through that moment. And I know because of your efforts and staff efforts and so much advocacy for years, it's happened regionally, but because you were able to welcome the governor, we were able to deliver fifty million dollars for the Indian Bridge Canyon, Indian Canyon Bridge Project, which is truly incredible. You've been an advocate for residents, for investing in parks, for investing in playgrounds, and you've just done it with joy. And so it's been a joy to serve with you. I also would be remiss to say also got to watch you lead with joy as you signed our Sister City and joined our Sister City delegation to Mexico and to be able to join San Miguel de Aende and see you be the face of the city for that moment and be able to speak in Spanish and have that, you know, cultural competency and just the full authenticity that you and your family bring to this community. So thank you for your service. I know that you also didn't sleep during Tropical Storm Hillary. I think you did a huge number of national media, and it's just been impressive to see you truly work your, you know, I didn't write any notes either. I wasn't sure what I was gonna say, but just work your heart out. You've really worked your heart out. You've been everywhere. You've done so many ribbon cuttings. You've done everything that's been demanded of you and so much more. And I know you'll go down in history as the first Latina mayor for the city of Palm Springs. I know it matters for those of us who get to serve with you, those of us who get to watch your leadership and all the little kids watching who will be mayor. We have our future mayor in the audience here today in 20 years. So thank you for that leadership. Thank you for governing with such joy. It's been a true pleasure to see you be mayor this term. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. With that, I'd like to ask if there is a motion to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Jeffrey Bernstein to the position of mayor and to appoint councilmember DeHart in the position of Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councilmember Hostage and a second by councilmember DeHart, which I think is appropriate. That's fine. And can we then have a vote? I think we, can we do a roll call vote? I know we're all here, but just for the sake of it.
Councilmember Hostage.
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein.
Yes.
Mayor Garner.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
So at this time, Dr. Oscar Chamudas will now administer the oath of office to our incoming mayor, Jeffrey Bernstein.
I, Jeffrey Bernstein.
I, Jeffrey Bernstein.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly. Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am now about to enter.
So at this time, we're going to rotate, but we're not going to take a break because we have a long meeting ahead of us.
Thank you. I'm going to say a few words. That's okay? First of all, happy last night of Hanukkah. I'd like to say a few words about what lies ahead. Before that, I have a few thank yous, as I never expected to be an elected official, and this has only been made possible in the years ahead due to others. First, to Mayor Grace Garner. Grace, it's been an honor and a privilege to sit next to you this last year. I know the tradition was set for the outgoing mayor to swear in the incoming mayor. For reasons very personal, you've graciously encouraged me to have my husband do so. And Councilmembers Holstich swore in Mayor Middleton in 2021. There was a discussion about peaceful transition, and I can assure everyone that Mayor Grace Garner and I have confirmed this is indeed peaceful. We've sat down together pretty much every week, and I so appreciate the guidance, advice, and most importantly, the friendship. Grace, you've led our city through a national disaster. You have advocated for those you represent but always valued what is best for Palm Springs. You've made a point to be present throughout the city and treat every citizen like a community leader and always with a compassion, intelligence, and grace. I look forward to another three years serving with you. To our other two former mayors here, Kristi Holstich and Lisa Middleton, you have been friends and mentors for years, and I continue to learn from you. I regret that this is the last year we will be on council together, but I'm so excited for both of you serving in your new roles when you win your elections, and I know you will continue to support our city. To Mayor Pro Tem DeHart, who made the plunge from business owner to council member as I did, your commitment to social good remains an inspiration and brings immense value to your role on council. I look forward to working even more closely with you in your new role as Mayor Pro Tem, although I miss being called MPT. And I sincerely want to thank the entire city staff who have been more than patient with me as I learned ropes. Scott Stiles, I couldn't think of a better person to be managing the city. I may have been on your hiring committee, but you've got 30 years of city governance I continue to learn from. Your involvement with the community and your leadership of 600-plus city staff is admirable. Thank you to our brilliant leadership team of Assistant City Manager Teresa Gallivan, Deputy City Managers Jeremy Hammond and Flynn Fag, and our Police Chief Andy Mills, Fire Chief Paula Alvarado, City Attorney Jeff Ballinger, and to all the staff here today. You've helped me a lot. But most importantly, thank you to the other 600-plus staff members who make our city run. You are one of the hardest, most dedicated teams of professionals I've ever met or had the pleasure to work with, and I've had an extensive career. To my family, including my mom, who's watching me at home from New York, and my brother who's here today. Can you believe I'm here? To those in my business who have not only kept it going while I juggled two jobs but have made it thrive, thank you. And now I know, I'd like to address a few things about what lies ahead, and there's issues that may have been in the works for years or have been advanced in the last year or just starting, but in the years to come, myself along with the entire city council will be furthering together. Affordable housing, workforce housing, and addressing help for the homeless population remains our priority. In the next 18 months, we'll open three affordable housing complexes and our navigation center. On my first day of office, I proposed a resolution allocating a percentage of vacation rental to tax to affordable housing, and that was passed this year, and this is just the beginning. Our locally-owned business community remains a core commitment, as I do believe that differentiates Palm Springs from so many other cities. I'm excited about the many achievements ahead that we'll see due to our new business liaison, our new economic development initiative, our Economic Development Officer, and the subcommittee that Councilmember Holstich and I have restarted. We will see the opening of the Thompson Hotel, a groundbreaking for the Dream Hotel and a groundbreaking for the West Valley campus of the College of the Desert, and bring to a halt the stalled projects that ensure they either move forward or move on. I'll continue to ensure that we keep our city in a secure financial position whatever lies ahead. Our Parks Master Plan will be in the works, and Councilmember Holstich and I will chair a Parks Task Force to ensure our inneed parks are brought up to the level they need to be, and they are something that is truly unifying the community and that there is truly something for everyone. I'm determined to cement our commitment to open spaces and climate awareness so that while we add more housing and encourage economic development, we do not lose sight of what makes Palm Springs a natural wonder envied by many. In 2024, we will come out of the starting gate full speed ahead on our new infrastructure projects, the new library, the new fire station, our convention center upgrade, our airport expansion, the Indian Canyon Bridge, and others. We'll continue to enshrine the importance of our historical buildings that are so essential to the Palm Springs brand. And with the Arts and Culture Roundtable, also initiated by Councilmember Holstich and myself, we will advocate and advance Palm Springs as an arts and culture destination, supporting and growing our dozens, if not hundreds, of local organizations and businesses. And there's so much more that I don't have time to mention. But most importantly to me, we will never stop focusing on the diverse community and ensure that all residents, regardless of race, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, age, ethnicity, primary language, or economic status, are valued equally. And over the last year, I've met so many of our residents who, like me, love Palm Springs and have great ideas, passions, and concerns and optimism for the future of Palm Springs. It truly is the residents that make Palm Springs like no place else. Lastly, I must thank my husband, Dr. Oscar Chamudas, my gay Jewish Latin immigrant husband, who supports and inspires me no matter what challenges we face. Everything good I am is because of him. I was elected by the residents of District 2 and will continue to advocate for them, to listen to them, and make myself available to them. However, I recognize that I served the entire city of Palm Springs, especially in my role as mayor, and will never lose sight of that. I thank you all for this honor of a lifetime and will do my very best to serve you well. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or a council member would like to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and/or vote? No. Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion to accept? City Clerk, could you, Dr. Roll Call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem DeHart.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Bernstein.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
At this time, I invite the City Attorney Jeff Ballinger to provide a report in the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the public. The city council met in closed session to discuss the one item that is listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If there is written comment that you wish to distribute to the city council members, please hand it to the city clerk. The first speaker is Afthab Dada.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and congratulations, Mayor Bernstein, and congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem, Ron DeHart. I hope I can get an extra minute, please. I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and the tourism community. Three decades ago, I began my journey in Palm Springs and the greater Palm Springs tourist when I arrived to manage the Hilton Palm Springs. Over the years, I have considerably advocated the ideas and projects that support our local tourism economy. In 2001, I led our contingent and the tourism leaders to increase the transient occupancy tax and led the expansion of the $40 million convention center. In 2008, when we were in the financial crisis, I worked to create the T-Bed for convention and hotels with the new tax revenue being funded and expanding the airport service, encouraging and renovating the hotels, and promoting Palm Springs as a tourist destination. Also in 2001, one of the leaders of the Measure J campaign to enact the 1% sales tax to create the new downtown, which I'm very proud of. The projections were $8 million, and I believe we are up to $23 million and counting. These are the three examples, but we all know that these projects have highlighted and benefits Palm Springs as a major destination. This evening, you are considering city funding for the Plaza Theater renovation, funding that will booster the significant funding for the theater fundraiser that received a public commitment. But also keep in mind, because I always love to lobby, that we have two critically other projects that will set the tone for decades for our destination, expanding our convention center and also adapt the facilities to meet the new clients' needs and expectations. A convention center facility study was completed and presented to the city council earlier this year while outlining the city decision and the scope benefiting the convention center, improvements, and another convention center hotel. We are already losing bookings to conventions and destinations that are ahead of us. This loss of business directly is irreplaceable. Expanding the infrastructure and service of the Palm Springs International Airport, including new custom facilities, airport and convention centers are the critical for the future not only of our city but for the entire destination.
Thank you. Your time's about up. Sorry.
Tourism is a local economy. Funding for this is essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dominic Moonheart.
All right, Mayor and City Council. Is it on? Yep, okay. Sorry. Well, hello, Mayor and City Council. I just want to, this day is just one year later, and Mayor Garner is no longer mayor. It's chilling. And then I know one more year later, you two will be hopefully going to Sacramento. And Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, congratulations on your new positions. You guys will enjoy it. And Mayor Garner, thank you very much for the support that you've given the youth, especially at Rancho Mirage High School, when I was Technical Theater President. You being at our musical really meant a lot to the students, when a lot of students don't have faith in government nowadays. And for you to be there in a different city, you know, it meant a lot. I went through a lot that day. There was a lot that happened behind the scenes, but I want to thank you very much for being there, and all of you, honestly, for being here for the youth. So thank you very much, and I hope to be the first autistic mayor for the city of Palm Springs. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
I have no other public comments here.
We have two, public hearing and non-agenda items.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without, well, I entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar. Is it working? Is it working? Okay. And the motion passes 5-0. The next item is Item 2A, a public hearing, a request for vacation of a portion of public right-of-way shown as Lot D and Lot C, Crosley Tract, MB 3244, and reservation of public utility easement in Section 29 Township 4, Range 4 East, Engineering File R 22042230. May we have a staff report, please?
And council members, Joel Montalvo, Engineering Department. I'll be brief. This item before you today is for the right-of-way vacation of excess right-of-way on Martha and Marguerite Streets located within the Crosley Tract and immediately adjacent to Cathedral Canyon Country Club Golf Course and Track 3, 4, 6, 2, 7, the Eldorado Mobile Home Park. The existing right-of-way at this location is 60 feet wide with a 35-foot wide and 60-foot wide easement to remain in place for Desert Water Agency facilities. Staff has done all the research and communicated with all utility companies and has determined that the excess right-of-way can be vacated. Staff recommends approval of the right-of-way vacation. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for staff? Are there any questions for staff?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Do we have any public speakers?
No public speakers.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Nope. Is there a motion? We have a motion by Councilmember Holstich, a second by Mayor Pro Tem DeHart. And it passes 5-0. The next item is Item 2B, a public hearing for a council call-up of an application by Cadence Group LLC comprised of a development permit, a variance and conditional use permit for proposed drive-through coffee shop on a .46-acre parcel located at 2466 North Palm Canyon Drive, APN 504250031, Zone PD 113, general plan, mixed use, case is DP 2023 0018, CUP 2023 0020, VAR 2023 0007. May we have a staff report, please?
Sorry about all those numbers. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council, Mayor Pro Tem. This is a council call-up of a decision by the Planning Commission for an approval for a new drive-through restaurant, which would be a Starbucks Coffee located at the southeast corner of North Palm Canyon Drive and Racket Club. at the southeast corner of North Palm Canyon Drive and Racket Club. Our principal planner, Ken Lyon, has been managing the project for some time now, so he's going to walk you through some background on the proposal, and I'll then come in and sort of tell you about some developments since the planning commission's decision, as well as sort of where we go from here. So with that, I'll have Ken sort of walk you through the details of what Starbucks is proposing.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mayor and council. So the project before you, as you mentioned, is a drive-through Starbucks at the corner of Racket Club Road and North Palm Canyon Drive. There's four components, as you were reading them all off, three of them. There's a development permit, there's a conditional use permit, there's a variance, and there's also the architectural, the major architectural for this. Let's see if I can get this to work now. Do I need them to load it? There we go. A little head here, let me just get this back to where it belongs. Sorry. Be back here a minute. Trying to get to the beginning here, apologize for this. Okay, so this is the project, as looking at it from the corner of Racket Club Road and North Palm Canyon Drive. Currently, the site is vacant, and it's adjacent to Del Taco that's been there since approximately the 1980s. A little bit of background, this is a half-acre lot. As you can see from the image there, it's a rather strange-shaped lot, a pie-shaped lot, that takes access across adjacent parcels. That's where the white arrows are. As the title was informing you, this is a PD zone. It was a former pad location as part of a shopping center that was demolished in the early 2000s. The two roads that it fronts is Palm Canyon, which is a major thoroughfare on our general plan map, and Racket Club Road, which is a secondary. As I mentioned, the easements at the white arrows are how this particular site takes access from the public right-of-way. The parcel is part of a former shopping center that was demolished in the early 2000s. Various plans in the 1980s had proposed a restaurant on this same location, and later a drive-through restaurant with a much shorter queuing lane with indoor and outdoor dining, and actually a car hop service. The proposed project before you is a drive-through coffee shop. There is no walk-up, take-out, or dine-in service. It's an 1,150-square-foot building. The purpose of the variance is to request approval for a building that is less than 2,000 square feet, which is the minimum size for the underlying C1 zone. The drive-through, as it was designed, is queuing for 19 vehicles. Our code requires a minimum of seven, so they have exceeded the required minimum for a queuing lane for a drive-through. They have provided extensive landscaping and buffering with many shade trees and screen wall at the queuing lanes as required by the zoning code. The property also has accommodated off-street parking for seven spaces, and these are primarily for the staff. They anticipate three to four staff persons operating this coffee shop, and so there's room there for both shifts to park in the space and take on their shift change. Here's the site plan. So as you can see, there are shade trees at the perimeter, providing shade not only to the project site, the queuing lanes, but also the public sidewalk there. There is a four-foot screen wall at the drive-through. So as you're looking at this parcel from the two street frontages, the drive-through lanes are to be screened with a four-foot-high wall. The Architectural Review Committee requested there would also be some additional landscaping in front of that wall to help screen for lights of the cars. The project has all-new drought-tolerant landscaping beds, including the two-street frontages, and there is a stormwater retention basin as required by code at the southern end of the site. These are the building elevations. The building, as it went through Architectural Review, was something that had some concerns by the ARC, and they've requested that the applicant come back and further articulate the Palm Canyon and the Racket Club Road fronting facades, and the applicant has agreed to do so. The planning commission and the Architectural Review did have discussions about this project, the appropriateness of a drive-through-only business, the orientation of the buildings in relationship to the major intersections. It kind of turns its back to the corners, and so they were concerned about that. The lack of pedestrian access and seating, and then the amount of landscaping and shading that was provided. The planning commission did approve the project on an affirmative vote, 3 to 2, with one absent, and the Architectural Review Committee did approve the project 6-0 with added conditions. These are the conditions of approval that both the planning commission and the ARC requested the applicant to incorporate. As you see under the planning commission, full shade structures at both the queuing lane, at the pickup window, which is required by the zoning code, more shade trees around the perimeter of the site to screen the queuing lanes and the back of the building. When the ARC reviewed the project on November 6, they also requested that the full shade structure at the order machine, which is also required by code, be included. They asked for better articulation on the two-street-facing sides of the building, as I mentioned, the shrubs in front of the queuing lanes, and they asked that the applicant provide a diagram that clarifies the circulation, the vehicular circulation. The drive aisle serves both as the exiting lane for the adjacent Del Taco, as well as the entering lane for the proposed Starbucks. And so there's a bit of a traffic flow crossover there that they wanted to see diagrammed clearly. Okay, and now I'm going to hand it back to the planning director. Thank you.
All right, so Ken kind of gave you a bit of a flavor of some of the comments that staff had worked through with the applicant through the process, as well as the conversations that happened at the planning commission and the ARC. So in response to those comments, again, around whether a drive-through-only was appropriate, how it oriented to the streets, how we got pedestrians through and around the site, the applicant did, earlier this week, submit to you all a memo, as well as a proposed revised site plan, that they believe started to address some of those comments. And so I'm just going to summarize them here. They did eliminate one of the drive-through aisles, so there would now just be one single drive-through aisle, as proposed by the applicant, which would reduce the number of spaces for queuing cars from 19 to 15 in one longer-drive queue aisle. They have also added a walk-up order window on the north side of the building, as well as a large covered outdoor patio with seating, so that people who are using that walk-up window, getting their coffee, would have space to sit outside. They've also added a public restroom for those patrons in the previous plan, because it was a drive-through-only. There was an interior restroom, which would be just for staff, however, under the California Plumbing Code. And as a result of adding that space for patrons, they did need to add an additional restroom that would be accessed from the outside of the building for those patrons. They've also, as a result of the comments made by the ARC, agreed to, it's not detailed in the plan that was submitted to you, but agreed to improve the articulation of the building facing North Palm Canyon Drive. I do just want to state, you know, that came in late in the week. We're not presenting it here necessarily, because staff haven't had time to review that plan in detail. However, you know, this is what they're proposing to you in response to the comments and their understanding of some of the concerns that have been raised in the community. In terms of the process from here, this is a de novo hearing tonight, so under the municipal code, the previous actions of the planning commission and the Architectural Review Committee have been set aside. You are holding a de novo hearing and have a few options available to you. You may affirm, modify, or reverse those previous decisions tonight and make a final decision as the council. You could also choose to continue this hearing and have us come back to you potentially in January or some later date with more detailed plans and perhaps a more fuller staff report. Or you could refer the matter back to the planning commission and the ARC with additional direction on how you want to see the project move forward. The decision under the municipal code is to be rendered in 15 days. Of course, we're heading into the holidays, so there's also a provision in there that says that 15 days can be extended to 90 days, should you need more time. The decision, you know, is guided by the findings in the zoning code. Those begin on page 15 of your staff report. And again, the development permit is for the overall site design. The conditional use permit is specific to the drive-through use, and the variance would be to allow a building of less than 2,000 square feet. So with that, we will conclude our presentation. The applicant is here in the audience from the Cadence Group, Akeem and Wong, who can speak to the memo as well as the project. And I believe our planning commission chair, Kathy Wormick, is here as well, should you have any questions of her. Thank you. And we're available for questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. So staff hasn't had a chance to look at these proposed edits to the project. What would be the process if council were to like these proposals? What's our next step to make sure that they fit with all of your work?
I don't think there's any deviations that are so large that we would have big concerns with them, but I think there's some details we would appreciate looking at. So I think if you were to ask me my recommendation, I think either a continuation of the hearing for us to have time to look at it and come back to you, or a referral back to the planning commission would probably be, we would be most comfortable with.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Councilmember Holstich?
I noticed that I should know which buttons work for that purpose. I don't, I've moved. I've noticed that since we moved to shorter minutes, it doesn't describe the planning commission's discussion, and I always relied on those to know what issues the planning commission raised and what the no votes were for. And so I appreciate we moved to those shorter minutes, but it is a loss for us reviewing the whole record, especially de novo. So could you describe, in general, what questions were raised and the two no votes and what issues those were relying on?
Absolutely. And just to your initial question, I think that that was an unintended consequence, and so we are working at providing more summary of that in the staff report itself, so we'll address that going forward.
Thank you.
In terms of the comments themselves, again, I think the biggest question was whether a drive-through-only concept in this location made sense. I think there was an acknowledgement that, you know, while this isn't necessarily our downtown, it is certainly an area where we are encouraging more housing development, where we would like to see more, you know, pedestrian and cyclist activity along the streets, where we, you know, have access to the mountains and other recreational areas where we may see people passing through. And so I think there was, there was a discussion about, you know, we may have a specific site condition now that may, you know, to some warrant or make a drive-through-only concept make sense today. It's not necessarily how we see this area into the future. There were also comments made about the housing element that was recently approved by the city council. We have a number of our housing opportunity sites located at this intersection. Obviously, one of our largest is the site immediately to the east, the former Art Colony site, and in total, we have about 350 units of housing that we've identified in the housing element to go in this sort of immediate vicinity by 2029, if everything goes according to plan, optimistically. And so there was a lot of conversation, again, about, you know, is Starbucks, or is this applicant taking full advantage of those future residents that may be coming into the area, and is this the right model for them?
Chris, can you get closer to the mic?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. There were comments made about the location of the drive aisle and why it's located immediately adjacent to the two major roads that we identified earlier. In response to that, you know, as Ken mentioned, it's an irregular site to kind of reorient the building to the corner, you know, provided them some site planning challenges. They can probably speak to that in more detail, but there was a conversation about whether the site could be reoriented to have the building actually wrap the corner, have the drive-through uses sort of in behind, and it didn't sound like that was going to be feasible. So in response to that, they did also discuss beefing up the landscaping along those streets to sort of screen better the drive queue aisles. And then another topic of conversation was the shading. So I think there was an acknowledgement that the pickup window is on the south side of the building, the place where you actually place the order is on the west side, you're going to get very strong afternoon sun in both of those locations, and therefore looking at adding additional shade structures in those two locations. There was a comment received from a coffee shop located in the plaza to the north, and so there was a bit of a discussion around that. And I think the, you know, the commission and the applicant both spoke to sort of the different types of users who may use each, and perhaps this may complement each other, but there was a bit of a conversation around that as well. That pretty much summarizes it.
Thank you. I saw the opposition from Four Paws Coffee and some other supporters. Did we receive other public comment from the nearby surrounding neighborhoods or businesses?
Not through the planning commission review process, we didn't. Just the letters from those, from Four Paws.
Interesting. Thank you. And then can you tell me a little bit, so I see in the staff report that a drive-through is only allowed by conditional use permit, so can you just give us a broader overview of what the general plan says about drive-throughs and what are, you know, the, those concepts we are applying to this project should be?
Yeah, do you have a staff report?
I see in the staff report, you know, we have to find findings in order to apply the conditional use permit, to find, you know, that it's necessary or desirable, you know, et cetera.
Right.
But I'm just wondering if, you know, we have, you know, I know traditionally, we haven't always prioritized having drive-throughs in the city, and so that's, I assume, why we need a conditional use permit in this area for the zone, but could you describe that a little bit more?
Right. So drive-through uses are subject to the conditional use permit, so they are subject to the findings that begin on page 10 of the report. You know, I think as we embark on our zoning code update, we should probably evaluate the connection between the general plan, between our zoning code, between our sustainability goals, to see how we want to relate those things perhaps a little bit better, because I'm not sure that there's a clear sort of weave of those thoughts and goals and objectives through all of these various documents. So we were really looking at it through the lens of these findings, which are, is it consistent with the general plan? It is. Is it desirable for the community or in harmony with the various elements of the general plan? That one is probably a little more discretionary, and, you know, I think in conversations with the applicant and based on their description of the project, you know, the commission as a majority did determine that they met that condition, but I don't think there's anything in the findings that directly sort of discouraged drive-throughs. It's more just about how does it relate to the community and to the general plan, which does allow the use, and to the development standards of the zoning code, and with the variance, it does, of course, comply. The general plan, I would say, is also sort of a very general, high-level document. There's nothing in the general plan that specifically dissuades drive-throughs, as far as I've seen. There are broader statements, again, around, you know, reducing emissions, around, you know, minimizing conflicts between uses, people, and, you know, noxious uses or uses that may be incompatible for pedestrians and others, but nothing sort of to the level of specificity around drive-throughs.
Thank you. I know some of the other cities, like Palm Desert and Rancho Mirage, have made specific policies around where drive-throughs, you know, either not allowing drive-throughs in certain areas of the city, or certain corridors are not allowing them around 111. So there's no comparable statements like that for our planning documents here. It's just a CUP process?
Not at this time. And again, I think we have an opportunity with the zone code update, if council wishes for us to look at that further.
Thank you. And then for the pedestrian window that was added and those elements for pedestrians, are those required to be always included in the project, or are they just included at this point, in terms of, you know, what would be required moving forward and changes that could be made in the future?
We would have to look, I mean, if it was conditioned, if it was approved as part of these actions, if they needed, if they wanted to modify that, they would have to come back and seek modifications to the plans.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Mr. Mayor, we were joking that we've only said "Madam Mayor" in these chambers for three years, so it's a bit of a change to get used to, saying "Mr. Mayor" again, but we will adapt. Thank you.
Thank you for that graciousness of acting. Are there any other questions for staff? Councilmember Garner?
So you, Councilmember Holstich, raised the existing coffee shop, Four Paws. Can we just get some clarity from the city attorney in terms of, are we allowed to consider a nearby business in approving a new business?
I wouldn't encourage you to consider kind of the competitive nature of this business, but if there are other aspects in terms of traffic impacts or congestion, those types of environmental or zoning-related impacts, you can certainly consider those.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I have a few. Chris, one of the issues the applicants had is that if they have more seating, they're going to need more parking. And can you address what the planning issue is and what could potentially be done?
Sure. So there is no requirement in the code for them to provide parking outside of areas that are, that where patrons are being served or by the number of seats. So they are, they are electing to provide the seven parking spaces for their employees, but the argument that they've been making is they have that retention basin on the sort of south side of the parcel that's taking up quite a bit of that portion of the property. The model for them is that they need some portion of the site for a drive-through, and if they were to expand the building or provide more seating, they would then need to provide more parking. I think what we have talked to them about is, let's get to the right design, let's get to the right kind of use for the area, and then let's think about what the parking looks like. So we have a few different tools available to look at parking in the area. One is that they can look at shared parking with some of the adjacent businesses and uses. According to them, they did reach out to Del Taco, which has quite a bit of parking on-site, for anyone who's familiar with the site, and it is, you know, parking that is under Del Taco's control on their properties, that would rely on Del Taco being a willing partner, and apparently Del Taco has not, at this point, been willing to share that parking with Starbucks. So that was sort of off the table. But as, you know, I think that they can speak more to some of those to some of those conversations if they've occurred with other neighbors. The other tool, and that's the most typical way that we deal with a site that is underparked, is to look at shared parking agreements with neighbors. There is also, in the zoning code, a parking-specific plan that can be processed administratively as a land use permit by the department, where we can make an argument that perhaps the parking needs of a specific business or on a specific site are different than what the zoning code would otherwise require. And so that is something, you know, if the council wished to proceed with some different version of a site plan that we could look at to make sure that we get, again, the right kind of development for this site.
Okay. And I guess the other question is, if they were not doing a drive-through and just doing a regular coffee shop, is there enough to have a building and parking on that plot of land?
If they, I think the site is a bit constrained. So if there was no drive-through at all, they could potentially get a bit more building. But the minute that use, that that building becomes open to customers is when sort of the parking requirements come into place. So it would generate presumably some amount of parking that would be difficult to accommodate on-site.
Okay. But we did have other plans for restaurants on that site in the past?
I think at that time, it was part of an overall plan for a shopping plaza. And I think that there was a lot more opportunity for shared parking across the site. You know, I can't speak to the details at that time. But I think that's one of the challenges that we're having here is the sort of shopping plaza concept has gone away. And we're now seeing these individual sites coming in for development that are accommodating their own parking on their own site rather than sort of the benefit of looking across a larger site.
Okay. And speaking of that, that plot that is directly east and sort of also south of the Del Taco, what is, that is zoned for?
That is, it is under the same zone. A good portion of it is under a preliminary development, or sorry, a planned development district, which calls for mixed-use and residential housing. And then the portion actually on the Indian Canyon side is zoned for multifamily housing. Under the general plan, it's designated for medium-density residential use.
Okay. And then the housing, you said this is one of the key areas for residential development in the city?
Correct. I think that site to the east of Del Taco is identified for more than 150 units of housing.
Okay. But in the immediate area, there's about 350?
350.
That will come. Okay. And is there any movement on any of those plots?
We've had varied levels of interest on a few different parcels. I think we had, at one point, talked about interest that got fairly far along on that Art Colony site, that larger site. At this point, they've indicated to us they're not moving forward at this time. So we have one parcel a little bit to the south that is still actively engaged in sort of their pre-application phase of their entitlements for, I want to say, around 50 units. But other than that, no.
Okay. And the shared parking would have to be right adjacent with the Del Taco. It couldn't be across the street?
We, it can be within a certain distance, but it's depending on studies. So it couldn't be a mile away, but it could be within the vicinity.
There's a lot of parking across the street, across Racket Club, the, I don't know what the official name, the McLean Shopping Center.
And I don't know what conversations they have or haven't had with them, but that was recommended.
And I just took a look at this proposed change that they, that you haven't really had a chance to review. But have you looked at enough to figure out, how do people access? They have to go through the Del Taco?
They do. And that is, there's an access, a shared access agreement. And I see they've turned up my mic. Sorry for keep getting away from it. They do have to come either off of Palm Canyon to the south of the site or off of Racket Club to the, into the north of the site. Oh, there we go. And go down around Del Taco and then back over to Starbucks. And we'll see if we can get the plan up here. Yeah. So you can see the access point here off of Palm Canyon. Okay. I can't point, but where that one arrow is on the bottom side of the plan, they can come in there. And then they'll be able to go up a drive aisle that will be sort of essentially on that property line between Del Taco and the Starbucks site. And then into the, you know, to the north of the site and then around the drive-through. Or if they're coming off of Racket Club, they have to come in on the east side of the Del Taco, down around the parking lot of the Del Taco, and then back up to get into it. And that is an access, a shared access agreement that is currently on record through a CCNR.
Okay. So it's not really easy to access as a pedestrian from Palm Canyon? You have to sort of go all the way around?
Right.
Okay. Those are my questions. Any other questions? Okay. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to correct for the record. We did receive, I received and forwarded to the city clerk, and it is in our record, comments from Racket Club West Board talking about traffic, talking about other local businesses and, you know, other concerns about a drive-through business and then sustainability goals as well. And I want to also note that I see that Roy Clark and the Sustainability Commission, as a member of the Sustainability Commission, let us know that the Sustainability Commission voted unanimously to oppose this project. So could you just describe that a little bit more for the public and the record?
I didn't receive the comment from the HOA. I believe that may have come in subsequent to the Planning Commission.
It did. It just came to us for city council for this meeting.
Okay. So they raised concerns around.
Oh, do you have information about the Sustainability Commission and their concerns?
That I can talk about a little bit. I have a little bit of information on that. But I believe, again, it relates to the city's sustainability objectives and our commitment to, you know, reduce emissions and sort of focus on pedestrian activity. And, you know, whether a drive-through only concept is compatible with those goals.
Thank you.
Is the basis of their concerns.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Our first speaker is Megan Rodriguez.
Good evening. First and foremost, I want to thank Grace for your past, this past year, your leadership throughout the city and the community. It's been an honor to see you just navigate all the events and all the challenges. And it's been an inspiration. So thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Bernstein and Mayor Protem. Congratulations on your new roles. Can't wait to work with you this year. My name is Megan Rodriguez, and I'm the Vice President of the Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community Action Association. As a representative of DHGE, we would like to encourage the council to consider the local communities in which these businesses want to enter. DHGE, Desert Highland Gateway Estates, would like to see more businesses that reflect the community, homegrown and locally owned. DHGE represents one-third of communities that consist of intergenerational families to include youth that need to sit down in these businesses, use a Wi-Fi, complete their homework and projects. Currently, this proposed project does not represent the needs of the community. It's located, it's proposed location. We do not think this project represents the needs of our community and would like to see further development of this project that represents, that better represents the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roy Clark, followed by Kathy Womirak.
Good evening, Mayor Bernstein, Mayor Protem, DeHart, city council members, city manager Stiles and staff. I'm Roy Clark. I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission. And as you've just heard, we have made comments about this project. And I'd like to go into a little bit more detail on our comments. At the November 21 Sustainability Commission meeting, the members present voted unanimously to oppose the drive-through coffee shop at 2466 North Palm Canyon Drive. To be clear, this was the project originally proposed to and approved by the Planning Commission on October 25. And I understand now from the presentation and from the staff report that changes have been made to the proposal. As documented in the Palm Springs Climate Action Roadmap, which was first presented to the council in October of 2021, California Senate Bill 32 requires a 40% reduction in the level of greenhouse gas emissions, GHG, in the city by 2030 compared to the level in 1990. Currently, motor vehicle transportation accounts for about 50% of the greenhouse gas emissions in Palm Springs and statewide. So this reduction is a very big challenge. To meet the required reduction in GHG emissions, the city must discourage and reduce motor vehicle transportation and not encourage it. Plans to enable and increase non-motorized transportation must be made. Drive-through businesses contribute to idling emissions as customers wait to place their orders and to pick them up. Finally, bottom line is that the Sustainability Commission recommends that the council members do not approve a drive-through coffee shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Womirak.
Pleasure to say Mayor Bernstein and Mayor Protem DeHart, members of the council, former mayor, governor. I'm here, I'm, I live at 699 Wilson Lane. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Planning Commission. And I'm only here if you have questions. I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Councilmember Garner.
Sorry, I pressed the wrong button. I don't have a motion. So I think for me, the big thing about this project is that we, as a council, during our strategic planning, decided that sustainability was an overall goal for us. And this project doesn't meet the goals, I believe, that we've discussed in our plan. I do appreciate that changes have been proposed, but I would like to be able to see those really fleshed out more before we're making any type of decision. But I do want to state, for the record, I agree with our planning director, Chris Hadwin, that we clearly need to be, make, we need to spend more time making sure that staff and our commissions understand what our goals are as a council and that we're providing that clarity. Because I think that this project doesn't meet our climate action plan. It doesn't meet our overall goals for sustainability. And there's a lot more that needs to be considered in that. I know that sustainability was raised at the Planning Commission meeting, but there wasn't, but I think partly because our general plan is still in transition, they're relying on old information and not the information that we really need to be considering for this work. We've also talked extensively as a council about walkable cities. And we do know that that's residential properties available right next door. There is also lots of residential neighborhoods nearby that could walk or bike to this site. I'm, at this time, I would really appreciate having more time to work with Starbucks and find out if there is a way that we can move forward with this project in a positive way for the community. That's, and mostly because they are willing to come to us and make concessions. So I think that we owe it to them to make those, give them that time to make those changes. So that would be my recommendation right now is that we give them that opportunity before just deciding yes or no. Because as it stands, I can't support this project. But that doesn't mean I can't support it in the future with edits.
Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate, this is a public hearing item. It'd be appropriate to give the applicant an opportunity to give a brief presentation.
The applicant is online, I believe, or in person? Voice in person. Could you state your name, please?
Kaiman Wong. Good evening, Mayor Bernstein and city council members. Congratulations. And my name is Kaiman Wong. I've come here to talk to you about the project at Palm Canyon Drive and Racket Club. I'd like to take a moment, first and foremost, to thank staff, Ken Lyon and Mr. Chris Hadwin, for their guidance in guiding this project through the planning process and preparing our development for what we hope is a successful outcome. Being called up for de novo consideration is new to us. And so we're very grateful for your guidance. As you know, on October 25, we went before Planning Commission and received approval for our proposed Starbucks building. And at the meeting, we know that there were concerns expressed about the project, about it being only a drive-through only with no pedestrian-oriented service point. On November 6, we received ARC approval with specific conditions and were prepared to meet those conditions. This is a challenging site, as staff has presented to you. It's a weird shape and it is only 20,000 square feet, which is small for a general site for us. And the access, we don't even have direct access. We have to go through other people's property to get to it. And we don't even actually have an internal drive aisle. The drive aisle actually belongs to Del Taco and we're being asked for their permission. So that's kind of the challenges that we have. We worked with staff on this revised site plan. And they were very helpful in coming up with the plan that you see in front of you today. We assume that the issues that Planning Commission had are the same issues as to why we are in front of you here today. And just listening to some of the conversations, it sounds like there are, and maybe some more. As with other Starbucks in Palm Springs, we very much like to be a productive partner in the community. So that's why we're willing and very anxious to work with you. So we've gone back to Starbucks to discuss proactively about responses to the concerns that we've heard. And we met with them, and they've agreed to the concessions that we've talked about here today. The large covered patio, the pedestrian walk-up, the bicycle racks that we're going to be putting in for the bicyclist, public restroom. We eliminated one of the drive-through lanes. And so that's, that's kind of the reasoning behind all those changes. Of the three closest Starbucks stores, all have substantial cafe presence, especially the Reserve store, which is designed specifically to serve the pedestrian customer along the main drag of Palm Canyon Drive. So Starbucks doesn't have a menu of a couple concepts that they pick and choose to plop down in the dirt. Different stores are specifically designed to fit the perceived needs of the trade area. So when they duplicate too many features of a nearby store, all it does is cannibalize the other stores rather than offering new draws to incremental customers who are seeking a different offering. And so customers kind of talk to us by their money, what they're willing to pay and how they're willing to get there. And that's what the analysis shows. Drive-throughs, they serve a purpose. You know, when you have a sick screaming kid in the backseat and you don't want to go in, you've got the elderly, you've got ADA access. It does serve a purpose and is a channel. It's one of the many channels that we offer. So the concessions where the site plans have a shortened queue. The environmental issues, we understand and we hear them. We hope that reducing the car count helps. Starbucks also provides to its employees sponsored bus passes to encourage public transit for its employees. And studies that we've shown have shown that idling cars actually produce more or equal to the amount of on and off cars when you park, get out of your car, pick up and come back. So the needs of the community, what we also heard is that by providing this patio and walk-up window, it will also have Wi-Fi access for people to sit and enjoy, do homework, enjoy each other's company. It's what we call a third place. We anticipate that this particular store will produce approximately 20 jobs to the community. And they do hire locally. And I think our other stores will show that we work with the police department and many other different parts of the community to be an active member and participant in the community in contributing positively. Thank you for your time. And we hope that, you know, to quote Mr. Lyons, to be a good partner requires good listening. And we've listened to the Planning Commission and the Architectural Committee. And we've worked with Starbucks to ensure that the project is a positive addition to this neighborhood. So after three public hearings and two years of work.
Thank you.
We hope that the council agrees to approve this tonight as it's.
Thank you. Can we take questions for the applicant? No? Are there any? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Apologize. It's been a long journey. Thank you for sticking with us in our democratic process to go through this. So could you just talk a little bit about the orientation of the project? I appreciate that it's a difficult site. It does seem to me like it's designed, you know, towards that Del Taco and towards that drive traffic as opposed to our main street, 111, and then also the other street. So could just, you just talk a little bit about the orientation, also pedestrian access. We do want this to be a walkable area. So where are the pedestrians going to be able? So where are the pedestrians going to be able to walk through if they see it, or are they going to have to walk half the block down? Can you talk about, yeah, the visibility from our main streets too? So, the, I saw there's a lot of landscaping there and it kind of does hide the project. So, could you speak to those issues first? So orientation, visibility for pedestrians and access for pedestrians?
Great question. I don't know if we can bring up the site-
We can bring it up.
Can we bring up the, the actual site plan? I don't know.
Do you want a different slide? We're happy to help you with that.
Sorry. I don't want to break it.
We have this one that you used, but we also have your site plan.
Site plan's fine, if you go to the site plan. It's changed, obviously, based off of what we have in front of you today, but the orientation of the building is a great question. So we've gone through, believe it or not, about 16 different site plans to figure out how to make it because obviously from a business and a branding standpoint, we would love for it to be very seen and very noticeable. The problem is, is that we do not ever want to create a traffic issue. And so, we looked at the building right up against the corner. And then if we do something like that, we have to produce something called a reverse queue because obviously we can only pick up the coffee from the driver's side of the car, which means the tail of the drive-through lane, if you can picture it, actually starts to go south and towards Racket Club, which means if it were to overflow, it overflows directly to Racket Club, which we never, ever want to do. And so if we orient it that way, we can only fit seven cars in the queue, which doesn't meet municipal code, but also more importantly, causes a traffic issue on a major arterial, which we never want to do. We also looked at putting it the other way, which would be up along Racket, but Racket isn't your main, it's not your main way of, of, of traffic or pedestrians. So, we didn't love it, but we just said, well, what happens if we do do it? But once again, the tail of the drive-through lane faces south, which means if it overflows, it overflows once again into the shopping center and Del Taco was not happy with that. And also that it exits onto Racket Club. So we were trying to keep them happy. So that deals, hopefully answers your question about orientation. Visibility, what we're doing is, based off of the recommendation from ARC and from staff, though the site plan looks like that's the back of our building, we're going to make it so that there is a tower element on that side facing Racket Club so it looks like it's the front of our building. And so the average pedestrian and people walking or driving or biking by, it'll seem like it's the front of our building. So we're going to make it a little bit more, a bit more bigger. Now, we don't traditionally like to put a lot of trees along the front edge there, but we were asked to do that by ARC and they wanted it every five feet. The issue with that is, is that those trees and their canopies don't grow very well when they're that tight. So we might have to change the species about, of that, but we'll, obviously want to keep them happy as well, so we will try to meet that requirement as best we can.
Councilmember Garner?
Yeah, thank you, just on that, I mean, the, at this point, they're, they're providing you with remarks based on a star, on a drive-through only, not on this new pedestrian access. I don't think that that will be an issue because that's the question of, we want people to be able to walk in and use those facilities and not be confused that it's, it is just a drive-through and then making the whole process moot. So I mean, I think that, unfortunately, this would require some more review from ARC or an addition, an edit, or at least ARC giving staff recommendation to move forward with the project and however they see fit.
Yeah, we're happy to, to, to talk to them about that. Pedestrian access, another great question. So, right now, if you can picture it, you can see if you're, the curb cut on Racket, there is a little sidewalk. And so that sidewalk would go up and it would go north and then the pickup window would be right there on the east side of our building. And so that's, that's where the pedestrians would go to access it. We wanted to use that retention basin area potentially as a drive-through lane or potentially put the building there, once again, getting back to site planning. But we can't do that because that drive aisle is a shared drive aisle for the shopping center and there is code that I believe states that we can't have an exit onto a main drive aisle within 50 feet of the main drive. So, once again, it makes a really small site, that's only 20,000 square feet, it's, with all those restrictions and the setbacks and where we can put curbs, there were, there were not a lot of good options and this was the best option that we could come up with. And we think it works and that could give the pedestrian access that they need. We could add more pedestrian access as well from Racket and we could have it exit into either the landscape area. We would have to do something where we would go through, over the drive-through lane, so we'd have to protect, protect the pedestrian though, which we have to be careful of, but we, we have done that in the past.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay, well, I, I'm gonna, thank you, I appreciate this. And I understand this incredible difficulty with, this is a very odd plot of land that's been vacant for, for a long time and I know the applicant has tried to accommodate after getting certain requests and, and pushback about the drive-through only. I have heard from, from Racket Club West, from Little Tuscany, from Racket Club and the neighbors, they're not, and obviously Desert Highlands, Gateway Estates spoke tonight, they don't see this as something that is beneficial for the community or community gathering. And certainly in terms of our sustainability efforts, it's not really in harmony with our overall vision or, or with the general plan. I, with this new, I, I mean, I think there's needs more study on this new plan about whether it really is safe for pedestrian. It seems, I'm not even sure how the pedestrian access is or bicycle since it's, but that's something that I would want to have looked at. But I also think we need to think long-term. We have 150 houses, built houses or built housing units that can be built behind it. We have 350 in the area and although this is not necessarily currently a walking area, this is what the community wants and this is what our long-term goal is, to build more walking pedestrian and community gathering areas. And I think in McLean Shopping, I don't know if that's the name of it, the McLean Shopping Center isn't, it's an old sort of a strip mall model, but they have done an excellent job in trying to create some more community with the different restaurants and businesses there and I think they're making an effort. And as we develop this part of the town, this is in, in my district, it would be nice to see this as a place where people can bike to and walk to and have different options to, to eat and drink and shop and, and gather together. So, and, and I think it's hard for, you know, obviously, we want to encourage business development, not all developers are as accommodating as, as this one, but, but a lot of outside developers don't understand the needs of long-term for the community. And to me, this really, it seems envisioned more as a drive-through for people who are leaving or coming to town and then driving on. It does not seem like a place for the community. I agree that they have made changes, they've, as Councilmember Garner said, they've, they've shown an effort and what I would rather have them do is develop that further, work with staff and then go back to the Planning Commission with something that reflects what our goals and what the issues are. And, you know, even within what the Planning Commission approved, I have some questions about, you know, adverse impacts on public welfare, health and safety and obviously promoting a vehicular, of drive-throughs is not necessarily in the public health and safety because we, we are trying to have less traffic use in our city. And I think we should look at our zoning code and see, figure out whether we have greater restrictions on drive-throughs. I know that's what Ranch of Mirage did, so it's not totally fair to the applicant that we don't have anything definitive and I'd like to work and find out a way that this could be more of a gathering place, it's not just a drive-through with a, an odd sit-down area. So that would be my view is, and I think that's what Councilmember Garner, what, what your motion may have been. Oh, Councilmember Middleton, did you have comments? I'm sorry.
No, I'm going to support continued conversation and, but I want to thank everyone who has spoken up on this issue. I understand how important this corner is, but we have a developer here who, after a property is sat vacant for 30 years, is trying to, to make something happen and I'm hopeful that we can find a commit, the ability to get a project that will work economically as well as work for the neighborhood. When it comes to drive-throughs, and I greatly appreciate the, the Sustainability Commission's concern, I don't think we should single out a individual project when it comes to drive-throughs. If we're going to take a position that we don't believe that drive-throughs should be a part of our future, that should be a conversation that we have in-depth on that subject, independent of what it would mean for any particular project.
Thank you. Mayor Protam DeHart?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, certainly appreciate all the time that staff has put into this, our commissions that have taken the review and, and clearly the applicant and, you know, I, I, I really applaud the brand for continuing to try to work with the community, work with our team to create a project that's going to work in this particular location because the, the brand is known for having the knack for finding the right place. They're known for being a good community partner and this isn't just in Palm Springs, this is around the country and around the world. The, the brand is known for creating space that creates that friendly vibe in the city and they become those gathering places and it's the place of community in, in, in cities. And this project, in my opinion, doesn't deliver what the brand represents and what they have, what they do do in achieving these other goals. I think this is the wrong place. We've heard from the neighborhood, the neighborhood doesn't feel it's the right place. I think it's an, it's a great idea, it's just in the wrong corner. So I, I, I won't be able to support even continuing the conversation. It's already gone through the cycle with architecture review and planning and it's been kicked back to us. So now we've got the responsibility to come back and, and rule on it and I don't think, I, I don't want to drag the applicant on any further than they have to, so I won't be able to support this going forward.
Okay. Councilmember Garner, did you have a motion?
No, that was an accident.
I mean, my, my motion would be to continue, continue this hearing to allow for the applicant to provide more detail on their proposed plans for pedestrian and cyclist use and really creating a space that, that works for the community and that supports our sustainability goals. I, I appreciate Mayor Protam's remarks as well because it is difficult, I think, to continue on conversations, but at the same time, I really appreciate the fact that they've been willing, that they took the comments seriously, they took it seriously, that they were called up by council and, and I want to give them that opportunity to-
Okay.
-if they like it.
Your motion is, is to continue and I, I do agree, I did, I would have agreed with Mayor Prot, Mayor Protam DeHart, except that if they, they have come up with some redesign that Planning Commission and Architectural Review did not review. So, do we have a second for a continuance?
So, just to clarify for the record, this would mean it would stay kind of in the city council's jurisdiction and so if the council's inclined to, to do this, I'd recommend that you include in this motion a continuance of up to 90 days as provided for in our code and staff would work with the applicant and then bring it back to the city council within that 90-day time period. Is that consistent with the make of the motion in the second or?
Yes. I don't think we have a second at this time.
Okay.
Do we have a second for that? Councilmember Middleton, okay. Any discussion?
I just want to emphasize that, you know, we've got a lot of really good input tonight and even the applicant told us, and if we're looking at what was brought forward to us, this is never going to be that community gathering place. There's not enough room on the corner lot to design that. We've heard that directly from the applicant, they're working with 20,000 square feet. This will never be that community gathering place because there's not enough room there. We also heard that there, there is a lack of access and that they're challenged with direct drive aisle access. That's not going to change. We can bring this back to council over and over. I'm not an engineer and I'm not a planner, so I don't know, you know, when we're told that these are challenges that they're not going to be able to overcome, I, I think we're stringing along the applicant unnecessarily.
Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, I just wanted to share my comments too, for the record, for the applicant and for staff. I do share my, the concerns of my colleagues. I think this is a good project for what this area is right now, but, you know, as a stop in and out of town essentially, and by the way, I will say as a mom with a toddler often in a car seat, I do very much rely on drive-throughs. So thank you for that, it is a service to the community. Traditionally, we have not liked a lot of drive-throughs and we have liked more unique spaces and so in the future, the site will be different, it will be, you know, hopefully there will be multi-use housing around that, more dense housing and we do need more future spaces for community gathering. I'm also concerned about this business model, which really limits workers and, you know, I appreciate that it's 20 jobs, but that is, I think, a lot less than a large-scale store would be. And so, you know, this is a model that's sort of on the go and so I appreciate that. We want to work with the applicant to make this project work for the neighborhood and this, you know, surrounding community and it's always hard to be in this situation when people have worked two years on a project and then it comes to us. But I do share the concerns about this being primarily drive-through focused, not, you know, can, not consistent with our sustainability goals and really not gathering places for the community. So I do hope in working with the project with staff that you will, you know, make sure that pedestrian window, pedestrian access, those sorts of things are really thought through and required and a fundamental part of the project and then work with the community because they always have really good insight about what they're, they're looking for. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on, on, on table for a 90-day continuance to work with staff and then come back to council. And the motion passes 4-1. The next item on the agenda is item 3A, a request to approve funding in an amount up to $20 million to assist the Plaza Theater Foundation with the restoration of the Plaza Theater, approved funding and repayment agreement between the City of Palm Springs and the Plaza Theater Foundation. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Scott Stiles, city manager. While our finance director is getting ready, I just wanted to share a few comments with you. As council knows, city staff, we've been working very diligently with the Plaza Theater Foundation to get to this point, trying to bring this treasured building back to life, which has primarily been sitting empty since 2014. It's located in the heart of downtown, critically vital to the continued vibrancy of the downtown area. And it was really quite astounding when the foundation came to us to report that they had raised nearly $15 million in contributions to renovate the theater and bring it back to a state-of-the-art facility. In addition to the generous gifts of many individual donors, we later learned that the Oak View- the Oakview Group was going to be a major contributor of the project and be a partner in the project. Of course, they're the organization that has been wildly successful in building Accra Sure Arena and bringing a lot of activity to the Coachella Valley. We also know that construction costs are really escalating everywhere. We've seen it in a number of projects. And it wasn't really surprising when the bids came in much higher than originally expected. I do want to highlight just a couple of quick points before turning this over to Chris Mooney, our finance director. I do want to make sure the public knows that, first of all, this is a city-owned building, and it will remain a city-owned building after the renovation of it. It's really phenomenal that we've had a private nonprofit group contribute these funds to our city facility. And despite the bid challenges, the project, since it has been bid and we have bids in, it's now a shovel-ready project, really ready to begin construction in a matter of weeks. Second point I wanted to make is that council has charged us, as city staff, with moving forward on two other very important projects. And I've heard some comments about, will this project affect two other important projects that you've charged us with? The first project is the renovation of our really important public library. That work is underway, the project's scope is being refined. Financial strategies and funding has been identified by myself and the finance director that we'll talk a little more about later, because on our first meeting of the new year on January 11th, we'll be bringing forward that report to you to get your guidance on financing strategies to keep that project going. And then the second other real critical project, maybe related to this, is Fire Station 1 Downtown. We've given the green light, full speed ahead, to our fire chief, Alvarado, to move the project forward this morning. I was speaking to our Fire Association president, Brandon Bataglia, where I conveyed to him that this theater funding is really separate from any other financing strategies that we're going to bring forward later on the year related to that project. The other thing is, that we've talked about, is if this theater is renovated, it becomes really important collateral backstopping for future public financing we might want to do. So, in, just I guess in closing, I did want to mention that, from a staff standpoint, we don't believe that either of these, of those two projects, both the public library and the fire station, would be affected in any way by the project financing that we're talking about today. And so with that, I want to introduce our finance director, Chris Mooney, to walk us through a PowerPoint presentation. And I believe we have some folks from the Plaza Theater Foundation that will want to make a few brief comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Congratulations, Mayor. Congratulations, Mayor Protem. Councilmembers, good evening. And Councilmember Garner, thank you for your services, Mayor. With that, I will begin a short presentation. After I get done, I will turn it over to the president of the Plaza Theater Foundation, J.R. Roberts, to give a synopsis of their request to the council, and then we'll turn it back over to council for questions at that point. A couple pieces of background. First of all, the foundation has raised over $14 million to the city building for the restoration of the Plaza Theater. Just past June 29th, we got approval from the council to solicit bids for the Plaza Theater renovation. And those initial engineers' estimates came in at about $16.5 million. A total of five bids were received. The first two were non-responsive, contained significant errors, and we threw them out. The remaining three bids ranged from $26 to $27 million. With construction costs now exceeding the original budget by $10 million, we've added in a contingency of about 12.5%, which is about $3.3 million, startup cost of about $2.5 million. The ask from the foundation to the city is about $20 million. And you can see the current budget, which will total $34 million. The foundation's $14 million plus the city ask of about $20 million. I'm going to go over a few funding options that we have come up with, that city staff has come up with. And note that the Measure J Commission did meet this morning. These two options were presented to the Measure J Commission, and I will get to what their recommendation to the city council is later on in the presentation. But the funds that were presented, or the options that were presented to the Measure J Commission this morning, and the reason why these two buckets were picked, is because these two buckets of fund have the potential to sit there unused for 18 to 24 months. And so, knowing that we have a project that's shovel-ready, we could use those funds right away, I selected these two buckets for options of funding. And to note that we would replenish these funds in future budget years by a combination of repaying, the foundation repaying the city, and future budgets fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27 budget would be used to also replenish these buckets. So the first bucket of funds is $5.85 million set aside for the new construction of the fire station. Again, we want, if these funds are used, the city council could commit city staff to replenishing these funds in future years. I will say that, for the fire station, it is city staff's intention to pursue financing strategies, other financing strategies, other than a pay-as-you-go strategy. And if that is chosen to be the path we take, this $5.85 million has the potential to fall back in the Measure J fund balance to be used for other projects. The second bucket of funds would be, the council could choose, or the Measure J could recommend to the council, to dip into the community-initiated project bucket. Currently, there's $9.5 million of funds set aside for the community-initiated projects. Right now, the application process is closed. As we continue to finish projects that are currently funded by the Measure J fund, we want to be farther along in getting more of those projects completed before we add to that list. So we think that the application process may not open for a year to 18 months. So the funds would sit there unused for that time period. We do, would like to leave some funds left in the community-initiated project bucket if the council chooses to use some of these funds. It is the intention of the commission to possibly open up the application process to fund some grant opportunities. We wouldn't use the entire bucket, probably, but we, that is an option for the Measure J Commission to do, and that will be a decision that's probably made next year sometime, as we get more of these projects completed. Two other funding options that we are asking the council to consider would be to use some of the general fund reserves. In our fiscal year '24 budget, at the end of that budget period, it was projected that we would have approximately $85 million in unassigned reserves. $32 million of those unassigned reserves would be the minimum reserve that the council approved at the budget session this past June. The remaining $53 million is unassigned and available to use. But I would like to ask council, that city staff is recommending that we do not use more than $10 million of that reserve. We're getting ready to go into a situation where we could be pursuing other financing strategies, issuing debt being one of those strategies. It's important to have a strong balance sheet, it's important to have strong reserves. And so, city staff is recommending that we keep some, most of those reserves intact for the purpose of having a strong balance sheet, so we can show that the repayment of those bonds is likely and probable and will happen when investors go out to purchase our bonds. The remaining option for funding would be council set-asides that were approved in a prior budget. $4 million of those set-asides would be used for police services and future study. And we have approximately $1.6 million in workforce development funds that have not yet been assigned to a specific project. The council could approve to divert these funds to be used for the Plaza Theater renovation. And we could also have, the council could instruct staff to replenish those funds in a future budget year back to the original intent. The Measure J recommended, recommendation to the council. So the Measure J Commission met at 9:30 this morning. It was a good two-hour discussion, a lot of good questions, and a lot of good discussion by the Measure J Commission, led by Chair Naomi Soto. And the recommendation that they have recommended to the council would be to use $7.5 million of Measure J funds toward the Plaza Theater renovation. That $7.5 million would come from two buckets. We would use the full amount of the Fire Station 1 set aside, which is about $5.85 million. The remaining $1.65 million would come from the community-initiated project bucket. That would still leave approximately $7.5 million to be used for community-initiated projects in the future. The funds, the commission is also recommending that the council direct staff to replenish those funds in future budget years, specifically fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27, and also use any of the proceeds that are paid back to the city by the foundation as part of that replenishment of those funds. Lastly, we want to talk about repayment. So the funded agreement that is attached to the staff report provides that the Plaza Theater Foundation will pay an amount to be determined by the city council. The payback amount, if the council chooses to do that, will go back into the funds that it was dispersed from in proportion to the way they were dispersed. So for example, if 50% of the money came from Measure J and 50% of the money came from general fund, the payback would go back to those funds in that proportion. And lastly, just wanted, oh, do you want to also say that the foundation is vigorously pursuing tax credits, the historic tax credits? There is a high amount of confidence that we could receive those tax credits. That's about, could be $5 million to between $4 and $5 million. That would be part of the payback if council chose to have the foundation pay back a portion of what we dispersed to the foundation. And lastly, just want to recommend, or just want to have a reminder to the council of, you know, what we're voting on, which is an overall funding amount, what funding sources are we going to use, and if chosen to have the foundation pay some of those funds back, what would be that payback amount? At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the board president, the Plaza Theater Foundation Board President, J.R. Roberts, and he's going to say a few things on behalf of the request of the foundation.
Mayor Bernstein, happy to be one of the first to say that. Congratulations, and to the esteemed council and hard-working staff. I'm J.R. Roberts, I'm the president of the Palm Springs Plaza Theater Foundation. I am joined tonight by, I think, more than half of our board of directors. And we're primarily here to answer questions for you. You have an enormous staff report, and we've met with all of you individually, and we know you're very familiar with it. I have just a few quick comments, and then we will stand by. I've got our vice president, Kevin Corcoran, here, and Mark Hamilton, who sees over all our finances, just to answer any questions that you might have in your deliberations. This is a landmark public-private partnership for the city that will benefit the entire Coachella Valley. It will be an example of how the community can be more hands-on in getting their municipal goals met. This project makes sense now for many reasons, and one is that the foundation has already obviously raised not $14 million, but we're actually today up to $15.2 million as of this moment. We continue to bring in money, and we're very happy about that. So we brought in over $15 million to assist the city in making this dream a reality. One of the most compelling reasons to support this project is that it won't delay or hinder other important city projects, like the new firehouse, and certainly not the new library. So, you know, what I would say is that the Plaza Theater would once again become a major economic driver for the city, generating millions in economic activity, and it will bring hundreds of visitors and locals per week to downtown to see quality entertainment. Those guests and residents will patronize our restaurants, retail businesses, our hotels. The Plaza Theater will also provide a gorgeous new space for local community organizations to gather. We envision live performances, film, of course, community and educational events, films, and more. The board is right now finalizing an agreement that we will certainly bring to the city with the Oakview Group, as mentioned earlier. They, of course, are the operator of the Accra Sure Theater, or Accra Sure Arena, to assist us with managing and booking the Plaza Theater. Oakview Group has vast experience with more than 300 live entertainment venues across the globe. More than that, they also have experience with bringing in corporate sponsors for ongoing support of the theater. We could not be happier with this partnership. They also have provided us already with a commitment of $1 million, plus another $0.5 million in promotion. John Bolton, vice president of Oakview Group, is also here tonight, in case you have specific questions about that agreement. Essentially, what we want to do here is we want to take the Plaza Theater, which is in shambles, and we want to deliver it back to the city as a new $40 million asset that will also bring in about 100 high-quality entertainment events to the city every year. In conclusion, in a world of turmoil and war, emotional chaos, things like the Plaza Theater become more than ever. Perhaps one of our greatest supporters said it best. Could you guys roll that piece of video for us? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lily Tomlin. The City of Palm Springs needs to restore one of its most iconic buildings, the Plaza Theater. It's been the heartbeat of downtown Palm Springs. This historic building has played an impressive role in the history of Palm Springs, and it's showcased many performers like Jack Benny, Bean Crosby, Bob Hope, and so many more. The plaza, which first opened in 1936, is in danger and vitally needs your financial support. Join me in this exciting campaign to bring the plaza back. The restoration cannot happen without you. For more information, go to savetheplazatheaterps.com. The arts make life better.
In fact, they do. The arts do make life better. I think there are very few people who would not agree with that. I leave you there, I thank you so much for your time. Regardless of what happens, I'm accustomed to the amazing staff we have, but the efforts that they have put into this project in the time is truly amazing. Thank you, and we will stand by for your questions.
Thank you. Are there any discussion, additional questions from council? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. And thanks to staff and to J.R. and to one of my heroines for appearing on camera. But one of the critical features of what's being presented to us is that this will not delay the fire station, that it will not delay in any fashion the library, and that all of the funds that are being taken now from the community-initiated projects and from Measure J will be returned as well as the reserves. What kind of steps can we and should we take as a council in directing action to ensure that those funds are replenished, and replenished in the next fiscal year?
Councilmember Middleton, it certainly, as council is deliberating over this matter and you're making recommendations for financing this project, if that's what you're planning to do, and along with any of those motions and directives, directing us to make those adjustments... adjustments in the '26, '27 budget, that will be our directive, and that's what we'll plan to do.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Hart?
Yeah, thank you. I think one of the things, Councilmember Middleton, that we could ask is that, that a fundraising plan with a measurable timeline and targets is in place that matches the funds that are being approved tonight from council, hopeful and wishful, thinking that my colleagues will support that approval. But I just, I want to remind the audience and the community, this is a city asset. And we've heard the foundation share, oh, are we just, am I allowed to, am I in the staff comments or questions, or am I allowed to keep?
You can go. It's not a public hearing. You can speak.
Oh, sweet. Sorry about that. What is I saying? Oh, that's my train. City asset. We've heard the story from JR very eloquently for some time, and from the incredible team that is, that makes up the foundation board of directors. This is a group of people that I want our community to know, they have given their time and energy and have just devoted a significant amount of their personal life to make this city asset, an asset that becomes that crown jewel that we all are going to be proud of, that will show the city off and be a showcase for our city for many years to come. This is the team that has demonstrated the leadership already. We can have confidence, and they've proven themselves. They told us they were going to go out and raise $16 million. We just heard from the president of the foundation, they've raised $17.2 million with the city's contribution. And they have led this charge to engage our community and get our community excited about this project, all while developing renovation plans, creating, going out and working with staff to get bids on this project, while finding an operational partner, creating a contract, working with staff for that future partner that will come before council at some point in time. And all of this is being done while already raising the $17.2 million and making a commitment that this team is going to continue to fundraise. So, I am very confident in taking the information we got from Chris tonight and setting aside $7.5 million for Measure J, $5.6 from our set-aside funds, and $6.9 million from the general fund to set that aside for our foundation board of directors to use as a goal for repayment in their continued fundraising efforts.
Councilmember Haltish?
Thank you. So, you're supporting staff recommendation in the staff report?
Minor changes.
Okay. Can you repeat the numbers again, just so I can make sure we're on the same page?
$7.5 Measure Js, $5.6 set-asides, and $6.9 general fund.
Thank you. Thank you so much for staff, for all of your hard work on this. Really appreciate it. Thank you to my former colleague, councilmember JR Roberts. We've been able to sit on this dais with you and see this project come to fruition and really see the inspiration behind it. And so, I really appreciate you lending your talents to the community to bring this forward and spearhead it. I know it's not easy work. It is no small feat to raise $15 million from the community, and I see some very generous donors are here and supportive and on your board. So, thank you for everyone who's supported this project. I do think that there's been some misunderstanding about this project in the press and on social media, so I do want to echo that, that this is a city-owned facility. We have a foundation board through the goodness of their hearts, who are doing, really, the city's job to develop a city asset and build it for the future in a better way than we could, because we have some real world-class leaders in preservation involved in this project. No disrespect to any of us who work for the city, but we're not quite there sometimes. And so, really, this is how to fund a city project for redevelopment of this crown jewel. This has long been needed for the completion of our, you know, downtown revitalization project. And so, you know, I think one thing that's been misunderstood by the public or the media is if we're lending a private foundation money and what that looks like, but really, we're coming together to jointly develop this project. I know it will be successful, because it already has been, because you've raised so much money for this asset. You're bringing on Oakview Group, which has really established their brand and their success with the arena and everything they're doing for this region. So, I know this project is going to be successful. And then, I want to just talk a little bit, too, about some of the, you know, just misunderstanding about the funds. So, essentially, we're not lending the money. We're coming together to talk about how to fund it. We can do it in different ways. So, we can take it from existing funds. We can do it from general reserves or other funds that we're sitting on. For me, sitting up here, we've done the budget many, many times. A lot of that money is fungible. So, when we do the budget, we fight really hard over categories that it goes into. We have very good problems in Palm Springs right now. We have too much money and not enough capacity to spend it. And so, you know, we always want to save for a rainy day. We've built up our unassigned reserves to $85 million, which is incredible feat in these recessions and, you know, bad economies that we've been going through. And we've, you know, have other protected reserves as well, just for the community who isn't as familiar with our budget. And so, we fought really hard for these categories of pots of money that are sitting there, and I feel very committed to ensuring, you know, that we've committed money for the community-initiated projects. That money should absolutely be replenished, if that's the right word, or promised to be back. I care about that very much, because I'm sitting here for just a year more, and so I'm not going to be here in those future budget years to remind you that you promised to put in the budget back. And so, I need, I would like to really include some assurances. So, what are the processes or assurances or legal protections that staff is going to use to make that go back? But essentially, this is money we could not spend because of staff capacity. And so, to me, that's fungible. I don't want to sit here like Scrooge McDuck on a very large pot of money. I want to invest it into our economy and invest it into our downtown and get this project going and completed, and then it will bring back tenfold, as we've always seen investments in our economy and in our downtown payback. And so, I support this project wholeheartedly. I know it will be successful. I would like to respect Measure J Commission's recommendation, and so not, and so that number is included in your recommendation. I would like legal assurances that that money will go back. And, you know, we always talk about how much to have in reserves versus how much to put out in the community, and some of us have differing opinions about that and different investment strategies. And so, you know, I would like to see more of it come from that reserve, and I think your proposal does that in a fair way. And just to say, we're absolutely committed to doing a library project and a fire station number one new construction, and so we have to assure our community that we're going to do that. And we have to, again, have real assurances that those projects are going forward. Those are not ready yet, especially the fire station. There's a lot of planning that still needs to be done, and so I would urge us to do that planning right away, so that we can spend these money, monies on this project, on those projects as they come forward. So, I just wanted to correct that for the public listening, because it seems to be a lot of either-or fighting, you know, taking from other projects, and that's really not true. We have enough money to do all these projects. We're going to have bonding capacity to bond for our big, big projects, and we really can do this all, and we don't have to fight each other for the bits and pieces of it. We really can come together, and I'm excited for what this will invest in return. And so, I think that's it. I, you know, I have some questions, specific questions about how staff came up with, you know, oh, and sorry, the one more thing I want to correct is, I saw on social media people saying, "This project ballooned $20 million more." And so, that's actually, as you said, not the case as well. It's $10 million more, and that's pretty typical in the projects that we're seeing for construction. And then, you also included startup costs. So, can you talk a little bit, because I have had public comment about startup costs and why we're including that now, and, you know, what should be privately funded, or what philanthropy should cover, or other providers? So, can you talk just a little bit about why you included startup costs and why they're important for council to fund now, as we're really adding to the pot, because it's a $10 million over, and then there's additional costs, the contingency, all those things I agree with? But I did get questions about the startup costs.
Yeah, I'm going to let Mark Hamilton from the foundation speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Hello.
Hi. I think you have a pie chart, something that looks like that. All right. So, a couple issues about the startup costs. Original intent of the foundation was to raise funds to build the theater. And then, back in June, I believe, we got the approval from city council to be able to operate the theater, and that's why we've brought Oakview Group in to help operate the theater. So, the startup costs are actually a new expense that hadn't been part of what we originally fundraised for, but the foundation's committed to be able to bring those monies in. And the money breaks down into three basic areas. One is the contract with Oakview Group that we're still finalizing the negotiations on, but are very close. It adds up to $1,001 of the $2.5 million. There are an operating loss for the first couple quarters of the theater, and we've budgeted $700,000 for that. And theaters like this, it just takes a little time to get up and running, and what we're trying to do is make sure that we have the ability to not come back to city council and ask for more money. If we don't use those funds, then it's sort of like paying down that $20 million that we're asking for early. And then, the final piece, which ends up to be another $700,000, are for the green rooms and office space. As you may know, the theater was originally developed as a movie theater, and so there isn't any dressing room space appropriate for the sort of talent that we want to have come into the, to perform at the theater. And we have, we've budgeted for $0.5 million for tenant improvements to whatever green room we're able to identify, and then $200,000 for payments on the leases of that green room.
Thank you. I don't have that pie chart. Do you have it?
Here it is.
It's in the packet itself. Thank you.
If you want, I can bring it up.
The pie chart is attached to the Measure J recommendation.
My colleagues have it. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have it. Thank you. We don't all have it. Thank you. It's not in mine. Thank you. So, can you just talk a little bit, I said a lot of nice things, so now I'm going to ask you a little bit, some harder questions. Can you talk a little bit about the, why the city should cover the startup cost versus, you know, someone you're leasing it out to, or, you know, what you can get private philanthropy for? Can you just tell us why it's important?
Yes. First, I want to clarify one issue. As we talk about the additional dollars above and beyond the capital campaign to actually restore the city's building, originally, the concept for this was that we were going to restore the city building and hand it back to the city. We were going to try to find somebody to operate it, but the city would take that over. We were going to, here's your, here's your beautiful building. And what happened is the city actually came to us and said, you know, you guys are doing this, you're raising the money, you clearly have the ability, will you operate it for us? Will you oversee its operation? And I'll be honest, I wasn't so sure I wanted to do that. The commitment, that means that the commitment goes well beyond the time that I had planned to restore the building. But I went to my very enthusiastic board, and they all agreed that they wanted to take this on. So, part of the reason you're seeing increased costs, and specifically to your question, councilwoman, is that those costs we had to create, because any operator's going to need startup funds specifically. And that's to pay their employees, to, really, to bring on the employees, to ramp up, to start doing the programming and ticketing and all the other things that take money to start up a theater. Did you have specific questions beyond that?
No, I think that makes sense. I've looked at the pie chart, and this is available for the public, too.
Yeah, I'm wondering if AV can put that up on the screen, so everybody can see it.
Thank you.
It's the colored pie chart. I think we submitted it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton?
All right, thank you, and I'll try to keep my comments reasonably short. Since it's, we're almost to start the film festival, I'm going to risk making a motion picture analogy. The movie Everything Everywhere All at Once was a really great movie, and it's a really lousy way to implement a capital improvement plan for a municipality. We can't do everything everywhere all at once, and we're not, and what we are being asked to do is implement the project that is before us and that is ready to go now, and that is the Plaza Theater. If we were being asked to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to choose reconstruction of a library or building Fire Station One, or taking and moving on the Plaza Theater, that would be an extremely difficult conversation. But we're not being asked to choose between any one of those three. We're being asked whether or not we are willing to begin construction on the project that's ready to begin construction, and then move forward on those other projects at the time that they are able to begin construction. It's been said before, and I want to say it again, this is a city-owned project. This facility and all of the improvements that will come to the Plaza Theater will remain public property. They will remain to the benefit of the residents and visitors of the city of Palm Springs for generations to come. And we are incredibly blessed to have private philanthropy, some of it very personal, and thank you, Mr. Lee, and many others for giving not only of your treasure, but your time and commitment to improving a public facility, and one that will, again, remain in public hands. If I was being asked to take money away from community-initiated projects, I would not vote for it. Before I was on council, I was one of the individuals at One PS that insisted that we needed to add something like community-initiated projects. And what I am being told is that money will, in fact, be returned. If it's not, it doesn't matter where I'm at, I will find you. And others have seen me mad. It doesn't happen very often. That money will come back. That money will come back. We're not making a loan to somebody. We're using funds that are in the city to move forward with a city-owned project again. So it's not a foundation or anybody else that's getting this money. So I'm going to be voting to support moving forward. We will have, and I, a very robust plan to bring in additional philanthropy so that we are able to replace these funds. We have a demonstrated history of being able to, to gain that kind of support. And I think this is a great win for the city, and it's something that I'm very proud to be a part of my legacy on this council. And I want to thank the Foundation, JR, all of the members of the board and staff for your work that allows us creatively to be able to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some questions and comments. And I do want to preface this that I am the council liaison with the Plaza Theater Foundation. So I've been to a dozen or more meetings, and I'm very familiar with the project. But I think there's some more things that we can say for the public. So we've said this is a city building. It's a historic building also. So we can't just tear it down and put something else there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it is designated, it is required to be a theater. Is that correct?
Yes, this was returned or kept by us, and the State Department of Finance expressly required that this be maintained as a historic structure and offered to the public as a municipal theater.
Okay. So we have a historic building that can't be torn down. It has to be a theater the city owns, but it has to be restored. So there's not a lot of other options for this unless we just let it sit there and, and be destroyed, basically, or demolition by neglect. So, and the Foundation is an all-volunteer foundation. Is that correct?
Oh, yes.
And they, they just said, "We want to come and raise money to give to the city to restore a building." Okay. And when we, when we are asked for this additional money, we're not giving this to the Foundation. We are giving, hiring the contractor. So we're going to oversee the contractor, our staff in our city. So, so the Foundation, although obviously we hope the Foundation's involved, I mean, they better be involved, but they don't have free rein of how this money is spent. This will all come back through presumably engineering and the city manager. That's correct? So I just, I do want to clarify something with it. We've seen with every construction project, especially historic, they have a tendency to go over budget. And I would ask the city manager or have problems, have somebody who is, can be very closely watching this throughout the process. Our engineering staff is going to have this, the library, the navigation center, the fire station, the Indian Canyon Bridge. We need a project manager who can clearly focus on this, especially with the historic restoration, when you end up finding things to make sure that we don't have any unexpected expenses. I also want to go a little bit out about the bidders. So there was five bidders in this project. Two of them were, were knocked out right away. The other three are all within 600,000 of each other?
Six, 700,000.
Okay. So if somebody said, "Well, let's just rego out to bid and see if it comes in lower," what do we think would happen?
I think the anticipation is that the cost would increase.
It would increase. Okay. And it might take another six months, a year?
At least.
Okay. So the economic impact, which is what happens when you have an operating theater and people come into town and go out to dinner and, and shop and buy tickets and stay in hotels, that could all also be delayed another year. So, and what did we think the economic impact of this would be to the city per year? This is, I realize it's an estimate and, you know, but I'd like to say what's your estimate, so.
Our estimate's based on the research we've done, both based on the performance of the follies over the years and also working with nine or 10 months of experience with the Oakview Group and what they've discovered in terms of what they've been able to generate, is that the conservative estimate is about $40 million of economic impact per year to local businesses. So restaurants, obviously theaters, hotels, and shopping. And that's a conservative estimate. We took the follies numbers and divide them, divided them by half just to be, you know, sure, confident in this number. We also estimate that the tax potential, generating new tax revenues, would be somewhere between two and $4 million annually as well. This is all net new revenue income for the city based on the estimates we've done, the forecasts that we've put together, not only with the Foundation but in working with the Oakview Group.
Okay. And I, thank you, I appreciate that. It's very helpful. And Oakview Group, once you have an agreement, when would they start?
Well, they'll be prepared to start the first of the year. We're very, very close. There are just some minor legal terms that we're just cleaning up in the agreements between our lawyers. Jeff has been helpful as well, as well as the Oakview lawyers. We're really close to that agreement. Ideally, they'll start 12 months before we open, but we're probably going to accelerate that and have them start the beginning of January. It's going to take at least 12 months to identify the programming opportunities, to program and to hire the staff that's going to have to ensure that the theater is ready to open and fully programmed on day one. So they'll start very, very quickly in January.
Okay. Thank you. And I think we've, we saw this with Aquashore. They opened and, and within a year, they've, I don't know, they've had so many programs ready to go. And it's not just hockey they had. And I've been to presentations with the Plaza, the ideas to have for different, for Latino program and children's program and for different sectors of the community. That's correct?
Yeah, we've really been humbled as we've worked with them initially with the million-dollar donation, then learned more and more about their capabilities. Humbled to see what it takes to really do this well. They represent over 68 major theaters across the country. They're programming for these theaters. So they have relationships with the talent, all different types of talent. But as importantly, they also have the ability to develop and to close sponsorship deals. And part of the key process here is to identify and find sponsors that will help us to maintain ticket prices that will be reasonable for the whole community. And having a whole staff that does nothing else but look at corporate sponsorship for speaking series, music series, and other things, things that they do for all of these theaters, we can tap into and take advantage of all of that. So the more we learn about their capabilities and we witness the success they've had with the Aquashore, the more confidence we have as a foundation that we'll not only be ready to open this thing on time, but we'll have the full type of program, the array of programming, and the power of their sponsorship people to really help us to continue to generate revenues above and beyond ticket revenues.
And that'll help the operating costs of the theater ongoing so that there isn't a constant drain to the city.
And keep in mind, the Oakview Group has agreed to do this with no management fees. So they're not charging us any management fees for doing this. So above and beyond the million dollars that they've committed to the project, this is a big further commitment for them to use their resources and not charge us a management fee, which for other theaters could be as much as 15% of all revenue. All of that, they're giving to us gratis. Another reason why we're working closely with them.
And I did get an email today that John Bolton said he would be personally overseeing this project.
Which is why he's here tonight. We're blessed to have John Bolton with us.
So I'm going to somehow put that in the contract somehow and make sure that it's him. I want to talk about, because you've raised this 15 million in 18 months. What are your additional expectations for opportunities for fundraising? Or have you tapped out the market?
I don't think so. In fact, if you look at where the money has come, there are significant major donors right in Palm Springs that have yet to step up. And we're reaching out to them now. And it's a variety of techniques through dinners and special events, who are reaching out and identifying those folks of means who we think will be interested and motivated certainly by the decision we're going to make tonight. So we've identified them. We've also begun to look down Valley. We've learned that there are other folks who don't live in Palm Springs who are really committed to the arts. And so there is a strategy to reach out to those folks as well and working with some existing donors that have a sphere of influence with other donors who care about the arts. And so we're focused on expanding our fundraising discussions beyond just Palm Springs but further down desert as well. And of course, when we got the bids, put everything on hold. Because what we were going to, what would we tell potential major donors when we weren't really sure if we could pull this off? We think based on tonight's decision, we're going to have new momentum to go out and continue our story. Because it's not that we're getting $20 million, but we need to find the funds to repay this, to make this theater a reality. And so we're focusing, our shift now is to focus on major donors, both in Palm Springs as well as down Valley. We think the money is there. And we also think that, considering the quality of what we're doing, and that this is of interest to people who really care about theater and entertainment in Palm Springs.
And you're still having fundraisers?
We are. We are. We have a series of fundraisers. We'll continue our outreach with the community for both small and large donations. But a significant focus will be placed on major donors and major donor development.
Okay. And I, and I, and I know that David Lee gave money, but he's offered somebody that potentially, there's other naming rights out there. Is that correct?
That is. I mean, David has generously offered to give up the naming rights if we find the individual who will provide $10 million to, to fund our project. And again, we think they're out there. The potential donors are there. They have done it for other organizations. And we're aggressively ready to take that story to those prospects with hopes that not only they'll match but exceed David's generous gift of $5 million.
Okay. I have one more question because the proposal, I think that made appropriate time around to heart, said was you and staff recommended, and this is, I don't know who this is for, was this, the $4 million set aside for the police study? That will, have we had any indication of how they want to use that? Or is it still?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. That money was set aside for us to do a study, which was just going to come out of our own budget. But there was not nearly enough money budgeted from our own budget for that. I think it was $30,000 if I recall correctly. And as you can see with the current fire study, the current one is about $170,000. So we did put out an RFP. We got some responses back, and the money was completely, the RFPs came back a much higher number than we had anticipated. Plus, they did not meet the requirements that we had, that we wanted for the staffing study. So our thought was to continue to try to fill the positions that we currently have open. We still have just a couple of positions open. And once they're filled, then anticipate and moving forward and speaking with the city manager about how to do that in the best way possible.
Okay. Because I don't want to lose this bucket for the police. So that, that is something that will come back?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You know, that, that was kind of third down on our list, so it's probably not our top priority if the staff had, you know, our wishes. I think there's other things that we can do that are still very workable and allow us to get to where we want to be.
Okay. Okay. And just, you know, I was, I was the chair of Measure J, so I really want to reiterate the comments and the importance of community-initiated projects. I appreciate the goal to try and use money for grants because we did see the Mizell Kitchen and the, and the school gardens and wellness centers were able to open within a year, basically, because they got the grants. Whereas some of the other projects, the city just doesn't have the bandwidth to handle. I know last year, we had something like a 20-something parks projects that we were trying to allocate, and we never got to that point. I want to just mention, I did speak to Measure J because one of the things council member Hostage and I are working on, the Parks Master Plan and Parks Task Force, is that it might be ideal to have Measure J work, be involved in that process so that when that's done in '25, we have projects that are ready to go, that are vetted, or at least everybody has, has agreed upon that Measure J could then determine whether they want to move forward and use Measure J funds or not. I was also interested, I was at the 1PS meeting this week, where usually people are more hesitant about spending money. This, and the comments that I heard from long-term residents, like, "We want this theater back," which was very interesting to me because it's not something that you normally hear. And just speaking of Measure J, you know, the main selling point initially was for downtown revitalization. And this seems to be probably the last really important piece of the downtown revitalization that is left. I don't know if this was anticipated, but it's a major asset downtown that needs to be revitalized and will help the neighborhood area. So my vote is to move forward. I mean, my recommendation would be to move forward. I would go with Measure J's recommendation on how their, on how their funds are used and do want to ensure that it is paid back and there is nothing that is delayed with the fire station. I want to just confirm that if the set asides are used, that that money is definitely going back into the, the police fund. And in the general fund, we did increase our base reserve this year. So I feel secure that we have that funds to use. And I, I know the impact of the theater that there, and although the numbers may not be a formal independent study, I believe that we will have millions of dollars worth of economic impact from this theater. And this will really, we are an arts and culture city without a larger professional theater. We have great community theaters. We have some great nonprofits. We have the great one at the, at the museum. But we don't have a programmed theater in Palm Springs and like they have in Palm Desert. And I think this is really important to the future growth of our city. So I don't know if there was a motion from anybody on what to do, but I would move that we move forward with the request. I would say that we go with Measure J's recommendation of the 7.5 million with the 6.9 from the general fund and the 5.6 set asides, provided that we guarantee this money is going to get back. Is that what you, we agreed upon? Yes.
That we include that there's a fundraising plan with a measurable timeline that meets with the goals of the funds, the $20 million, and that there's a quarterly report to city manager of that plan and that a project manager is assigned to the, to the project.
Yes.
I believe that if the council chooses to, to do this, that we may need to consider an amount of payback by the Foundation.
$20 million.
I, I would suggest that we have gone over, that it is a $10 million payback. That's what the budget was overrun. The other one is for the operating, really, that we were not anticipating. And we know that we're going to have the revenue, the tax revenue get back. Does that? Now we're getting complicated in what the motion is.
My impression has been all along that we're going to shoot to raise $20 million.
I believe they are going to shoot to raise, but I think the obligation in this is what the question is.
There is no real obligation. This is, it's a paper agreement. So the goal, we're setting a goal. We're setting a goal for our team who's out there. So we want to put together a measurable goal that they can work with and we can continue to measure as we move along. And we're giving all our confidence in the world that this team is going to go and raise that $20 million. And at the end of the day, this is a city bill. This is, this is our building. It's our bill. So this is just a sense of encouragement. And yes, let's pat these guys on the back. They're committed to go out there and raise these funds for the city. And my intention was to work toward their, you know, what they've already said, is their goal is to go out and raise $20 million. So let's put that $20 million upfront, and that's our repayment plan.
Any other councilmember, Hostage?
Thank you. So if I can just clarify the numbers really quick and then go into that. So you're agreeing with Mayor Pro Tem's recommendation. So the 7.5 from Measure J, which is Measure J Commission's recommendation, so that's 5.85 million from the Fire Station One, which will be repaid back, and then 1.65 from the community-initiated projects, which will also be paid back. And then the 5.6 from set asides, which will be paid back, and then the 6.9 from reserves, right? So is there consensus on council that those are the correct numbers? Okay. And then we can decide on the amount. So you're saying 20, you're saying 10. Can I hear, I know, Chris, Mr. Mooney, you had talked about probably there being 5 million in tax credits that would be available.
Correct.
I know that there's probably, you know, there's another state budget cycle that's supposed to be. available. I know we got 2.5 from the Lieutenant Governor, who made that request. Perhaps there's a few more there from state or other applications or grants. Do you have a sense what staff's recommendation is, is for the amount to request from the foundation to privately fundraise?
I would say recommendation, a reasonable recommendation from the foundation would be 10 million. That the 5 million hopefully comes to fruition through the tax credits, that would take a chunk of that 10 million back, and they would ask to, continue to ask the foundation, which they have committed to, to fundraise the additional 5. If they bring in more than the 10, I think they would be willing to provide that back to the city. But I think a reasonable recommendation would be 10 million.
Thank you. And I see council member, I feel like an auctioneer now, Councilmember JR Roberts. Do you have some insight into if that's the correct number, or what is, based on your experience fundraising? I know you've done other projects as well.
Yeah, you know, responding Vice Mayor, we have every intention of the Plaza Theater replenishing the $20 million that it's going to take to restore it. We are already working on all that, that's already been brought up. We feel pretty confident we can literally deliver back in dollars, about $10 million, between the historic tax credits and our other endeavors. I don't mind standing up here and saying every bit of the other $10 million will come back. We can't forget that this is going to create a major financial impact, positive impact on downtown. Whether we disband it tomorrow or not, every bit of that $20 million is going to come back in new money created by the theater in our downtown businesses. So you can ask for us to raise $20 million. I think what we're really looking for here is that the theater makes sure that it be that rare thing for a city, which is an asset that is going to be bringing money back, rather than just eating money. And we see that happening. I would feel more comfortable for the foundation of you giving us a personal challenge of 10 million, and then we will continue that as part of our capital campaign. We will always be fundraising. My concern is, if we have to personally spend the next few years, however many years, on a capital campaign of $20 million, it's going to make it very difficult for us to do what we had intended to do, which was raise money to help for programming, and to keep programming affordable. And that was going, after our capital campaign, that was going to be our focus. But every nickel of the capital campaign, which is what we're only focused on right now, will come right back to the city of Palm Springs.
Thank you.
Is there, yeah, council member Hart.
That changes my whole approach. If we're not setting that internal goal with our team that's out in the community, I don't feel comfortable telling or pulling out 5.6 million from our set-asides and risking to the community that there's not going to be a goal to repay those funds. And same with Measure J. I would, I feel, I don't feel it's appropriate that we pull Measure J money if we don't feel confident that we're going to replace that. So if anything, I think the general fund contribution needs to go up to 12 and 1/2 million and not count on those set-asides, that that money, as we learned from council member Holstich, has been a set-aside for a specific purpose, and I don't want to risk that we're not going to have money in that pocket when the time comes around.
Okay. I'm not, I mean, Chris, do you feel comfortable doing more than 10 million out of the general fund?
For the reasons we stated in the PowerPoint presentation, that we really want to have a strong balance sheet when we go issue debt, I would still recommend that we don't use more than $10 million of our general fund reserves.
Okay. And I wanted to also just stress, reiterate, because we had a brief presentation at one point about potential bond funds to raise, and I remember a slide in there, and in order to pay for that, what was the annual money from Measure J, do you remember, that would fund that proposed debt?
To fund both the library and the fire station. I believe it was around $5 million is what we're anticipating that debt service would be for both of those buildings.
Okay. So that would actually, we wouldn't need that for the fire station. Measure J would then still be funding the fire station and the library if they're funding that debt on an ongoing basis without having continued set-asides, because the plan is, they're going to continue to set aside if we don't get a bond measure.
That's correct. For the fire station, yeah, we still have plans to use the cash that's set aside for the library, but you're right, we wouldn't have to set aside for the fire station, because the intention is to fund the fire station 100% with debt proceeds or other funding strategies.
Okay. Then I think what my proposal would be, that we do the 7.5 million that Measure J has recommended, I wouldn't do the $10 million from the general fund, and then 2.5 million out of set-asides, but if I did, we'd put that 2.5 million back into the next budget.
You know, I feel very comfortable that this money will come back, and I'm more inclined to follow the recommendation that we received from Measure J Commission, and that we're receiving from Christopher, and that that will come back. What we know is that over the course of the next many months, we're going to see what kind of revenue is coming in. And for all of us who are on council, there will be a budget update that we will need to be approving beginning July 1. And so what the action we're taking tonight in moving forward, and again, I would do it based on the recommendations we've got from Measure J and from Christopher, if we need to update and revise those plans, we're going to have another five to six months before we have to make those decisions, and we're going to have a lot more data to be working with at that time. So rather than lock us in today, I'd like to see this come back to us as a part of our budgetary review process, so that if we need to make amendment to the plan, we can do so then based on our experience over the course of these few months in terms of fundraising, and the success we have there, as well as what we're seeing in our budget as revenue is coming in during the year.
So you're saying not to allocate where it comes from, or go with the recommendations of Chris?
My recommendation would be to allocate based on the Measure J recommendation and on Christopher's recommendation.
Which, Chris, can you clarify what that is?
I have it if I can. Can I make a motion? I requested a motion, so I think I have it. So I'd like to move to approve the fundraising, excuse me, let me just make sure I have the right word, the agreement that's in front of the council. I'd like to have those numbers be consistent with the Measure J Commission recommendation. So that is your initial proposal. 7.5 from Measure J, which includes 5.85 from the fire station, 1.65 million from the community projects, 5.6 million from set-asides, 6.9 from reserves. And you had some other requirements that I'd like to incorporate in my motion too, if you'd like to read those out.
The fundraising plan timeline with measurable targets that lines up with the funds that are going to be repaid, and project manager assigned.
Thank you. So I'd like to make that motion. I do have a few questions just about the agreement language itself, but if I could make that motion and see if there's a second, and then we can have some discussion around that.
I have a second. Second by council, by question?
Yeah.
Thank you. So just if I can, for the language, so the agreement itself, number two obligations of the foundation, it lays out the initial project funding, excuse me, and I meant to include in my motion, $10 million for the foundation to be required to pay back. Thank you, that was an important one. We already had the other numbers. It's been a long day. So with $10 million, so is your second still valid with the $10 million? So that portion, two obligations of the foundation, and then subsection B to the city attorney, repayment to the city. So it inserts the dollar amount, but I agree, there's very little teeth to this obligation, I wouldn't quite call it a legal obligation here, right? I mean, it requires them to do repayment, so it says the foundation, just for the public and of those following along. So it's to enable the foundation to repay the city no less than $10 million of the amount, no interest shall accrue, the foundation will provide quarterly remittances of amounts owing to the city. Parties to the agreement expect such repayment to be made in full no later than three years following the completion of the project, as evidence of issuing the certificate of completion. So I think that's amended a little bit, because it's going to be the reports, the quarterly fundraising reports. But are there any other teeth or any other requirements you'd like to put in there? It has sort of that three years of completion, you know, we know these projects can be very delayed. I know it also says, you know, funds will come in as they are paid, as they come into the city, right? But can you just explain the legal teeth for the community listening along and for the foundation, who's taking on a very big obligation, by the way? It's impressive, that's a big number.
Sure. And if the council chooses to adopt the motion that is made, I heard that there was the addition of a fundraising plan with some timelines.
Thank you.
I wouldn't necessarily amend the current language, but I would certainly add that language to this agreement, just to make it a little bit more specific. In terms of, you know, enforceability, it is a legal agreement. Now, obviously, an agreement is only as good as the entity that you're entering into it with. Here, the foundation certainly has demonstrated the ability to go out and fundraise, and I think the expectation of all the parties is they would continue to do that, and so that's what the city would rely on. If they weren't able to, this agreement does have other provisions that hopefully the parties would never get to, but I think based on the demonstrative ability of this organization to fundraise, even in such a short time period, I'm expecting we won't have to go there.
And you think it's appropriate to require that one repayment in full no later than three years after completion, instead of, you know, a timed payment schedule, or I know, you know, putting a little fire also helps them fundraise, right? Because it requires the necessity, so.
Oh, well, that's the full payment within three years.
Right.
There is a timeline for the repayment, or the payment to the city of the funds that the organization has.
Right.
And then it says, any dollars raised after that will be remitted to the city as soon as possible, with that exception that they keep the $2 million for their ongoing operations until the end of the three years. So as money comes into the foundation, this agreement provides that that is remitted over to the city, again with the provision that they keep their $2 million, at least for the time being.
Yeah. I thought that was fine. It's a little unclear in what amount they have to pay it in right away, you know, if it's $25, they have to remit it, but I think that's valid. I think everything is good if we just incorporate that fundraising timeline that you stated. So I'm, thank you, city attorney, for your work, thank you. So I will, if the motion is clear enough for staff, and there's a second, see if there's other discussion, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay.
I already voted while I was talking.
The motion passes 5-0. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 3B, a request to award a construction contract to Woodcliff Corporation in the amount of $26,320, oops.
Before moving on to the next item, we might want to just confirm with the foundation representatives that they're okay with what was just presented.
JR, are you okay with that?
I didn't pass out, so that's a good sign. Yeah, I think that this is pretty much what staff recommended, and we will give you everything we have, as we have in the past.
I should add that you can't actually stop working on this until you raise all that money.
I'm getting older with this city, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
We'll stand by until you finish with the contractor.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item 3B, a request to award a construction contract to Woodcliff Corporation in the amount of $26,322,000, provide authority to city manager for construction change orders up to $3,270,066, approval of a task order under on-call agreement number A8566 with DUDAC Inc., in an amount not to exceed $487,500 for construction management and inspection services, and approval of a task order under on-call agreement number 23P041 with TSG Enterprises Inc., DBA, the Solis Group, in an amount not to exceed $70,434, to provide community workforce agreement administration for the Plaza Theater rehabilitation, City Project 1804. May we have a staff report, please?
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a preface comment. So we had some conversation about project management and who the project managers are. Francisco Jaime from our engineering department is our project manager for this, along with our consulting company, DUDAC, and so he's going to give us a little overview on this contract. We approved the funding agreement. Now, after that comes approval of the contract to begin work.
Thank you, council, for having me. So I wanted to give a little more background, sort of on the bids that we received, how the bidding process came about, and sort of how long we had the bids open for. So on June 29, the council, the staff report was approved to request bids. On July 17, we opened the bidding period, also required a pre-bid meeting during that time period, which we did receive quite a bit of people at the theater for review of the project plans and specs. We've also extended the bidding period an additional month, so opened on July 17 and closed on September 12. During that time, when we first put the bid out to advertisement, we advertised in the Desert Sun, fan rooms, and in Planet Bids. Now, on the Desert Sun and fan rooms, it's hard to sort of track how many people actually view those advertisements, but on Planet Bids, it does give you pretty good data and background as to how many people were viewed. So this project advertised to 676 different entries, or of those registered on Planet Bids. Of that, 111 were listed as respective bidders. Once you further dig down into who was actually kind of proposing the project, it was about 25 bidders, the rest were subcontractors and suppliers. From that 25, and from the pre-bid meeting, we had 44 individual signatures show up to the pre-bid meeting, but ultimately only five just proposed on the project. As Chris had mentioned, two were found non-responsive, with Woodcliff having the lowest responsible Subsequently, after getting the bids for the construction contract, we solicited bids from our construction management and inspection services on calls, which DUDAC ultimately was the bid we recommended for award. A project of this size requires a community workforce agreement, so we have the Solis Group who would be administering those services or overseeing the CWA portion of the work. So with that, I just wanted to open it to any questions you may have on the bidding or the contracts that were recommended for approval.
Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Councilmember Middleton?
I think my biggest, two questions. One, what projects of this nature has would this contractor taken on? And two, are you truly satisfied that this contingency is adequate?
With a building that's historic, once you start, you know, demoing, there's always surprises. I think the contingency where we normally require or suggest 10%, this one would be proposed 12.5. So we're hoping that would be sufficient to cover any surprises that come up during construction.
All right. Well, again, I'm going to emphasize the criticality of having an onsite project manager managing this throughout, and what I thought was once adequate contingency funds have obviously escalated in the last few years, and so let's be extremely cautious when it comes to the contingency. And very, very prompt, uh, if we're finding that we, this project is running, uh, additional cost.
Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Garner.
Can you answer the first part of the question? Um, Councilmember Middleton asked about the, the contractor and if they've taken on other projects of this type. I didn't hear your response to that.
Sorry. When we solicited the RFP, that was part of the requirements that they had managed projects, uh, similar, you know, or historic, um, projects. So we have worked in the past with, uh, DUDAC, um, for me personally, more on the payment management and also our, our recently completed downtown or CP 1707 Palm Canyon pedestrian enhancements. To which, um, you know, with their help and their over, their oversight, full time onsite, you know, we were able to deliver a successful project.
They've completed historic projects and theater projects.
They've completed, um, rehabilitations and vertical construction.
Contractor had demonstrate through the proposal process, through the RFP process, that they'd have done, uh, historical projects. I don't believe we have them here, but they were fully vetted. And if they hadn't, they would have been disqualified, just like, uh, other contractors were. So we are confident that they've done the work and are able to do the work.
Thank you.
Joel, this may be one for, that we need to do some policy on. Uh, but we've got about a six, $700,000 difference, uh, between, uh, the highest bidder and the winning bid. Uh, and at that close a number, uh, the experience, uh, that a contractor has, uh, in taking on projects of this size. Uh, I think is something that should be a consideration. And I'm not asking you to go back and redo the, the process again. Uh, but if we need to amend our procedures so that you have greater discretion when, uh, differences are minimal. In order to make sure that you're getting the contractor, you have the greatest amount of confidence in, uh, to do the job. Then I would like to make those, uh, changes, uh, before we, uh, see another project of this scope.
Point taken. And one thing to, to do note that the, because of the bids were so close that they were clustered around that number, we're, we're pretty confident that that is the number, right? Uh, for everyone, uh, what we, as you mentioned, the unknowns, the contingency is going to be very important. We're going to be following it very closely. I have Francisco working on it directly. He's my principal engineer. I'll have a former building official who's going to be monitoring the project very well. So he is very well versed in everything building. So I think we have a pretty good team that's going to be monitoring this project very closely. Uh, we've been completing projects, uh, in this council today. You, you saw that we've, uh, completed six projects. So my team is freed up to be dedicated to this project and deliver a good project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to echo that in our bidding processes. I know we have a local preference, which we're also discussing, but if there is, uh, small percentage of a range that we have some leeway instead of just choosing the lowest one. Um, in case there is just one that's better going forward.
At every opportunity we get to refine our bidding process, we, we are taking it. So it's a point well taken and we will look at doing something to, to make sure that we are able to distinguish if a, a cluster like that, that something distinguishes the better company from the other. So maybe not always doing low bid. There's other methods that we're going to pursue. So, uh, point is, is taken.
Thank you. Do we have other questions or comments? Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the community workforce agreement. And I don't know who is best to explain, but one of the reasons we always get asked is why city projects are so expensive. And in part, the community workforce agreement does require unions and prevailing wages. That's correct?
Uh, it requires integration of union labor. It doesn't specifically require prevailing wages. Uh, prevailing wages apply to a public project such as this regardless. Uh, but it does require the integration of, of union labor into an otherwise, a project that otherwise wouldn't necessarily require union labor.
Okay. So part of the reason for the cost in these projects is that they're paying workers good wages. Is that fair to say?
Uh, that sometimes can, can impact the cost, yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this? Oh, we do. Motion by Councilmember Mayor Protem DeHart, second by Councilmember Middleton. Any further discussion? Okay, the next item on the agenda is items 3C, a request to review and approve, uh, the roster of city council subcommittees and appointees liaisons and representatives to external organizations. Um, there was a list presented in the packet and I believe that we still need, we need to make other arrangements for the representative for the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy Board. And an alternate for SEVAG's Energy and Environmental Resources Committee. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Councilmember Middleton, uh, Garner, sorry.
I'm, I'm happy to take on both of those, um, roles. I do want to just flag that the, um, in terms of the Eastern Riverside County Interoperable Communications Authority, I think there's a typo regarding the meeting time. Because it's currently listed as our sec, as at second Thursday at 4:00 PM, which would prevent, uh, any of us from attending. Um, so if we can just get an update on what the actual date is for that meeting, which is one of the ones I'm assigned to. But happy to take over the ones that, um, mayor, that you just mentioned that are missing.
Okay. And just one other correction, the, uh, the 1PS meetings are usually at 4:30 PM. Just. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. Uh, is there, uh, we have a motion to move forward with those two changes ma- made by Councilmember Holstage and seconded by Mayor Protem Ron DeHart. Um, and just to clarify, uh, uh, Councilmember Garner will be taking those two open positions of Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy Board Representative and Alternate for SEVAG's Energy and Environmental Resources Committee. And we are going to check those two times. Okay. Vote, motion passes five zero. Okay, the next item is agenda item 3D, teleconferencing of city council and board and commission meetings. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you, uh, tonight is, uh, a consideration of whether and to what extent the council wants to continue, uh, making teleconferencing available. Uh, both to members of the city council and the city's boards and commissions, as well as to members of the public dur- during public comment. Uh, the staff report, uh, that has been presented to you is replete with statutory references and references to bills. Uh, and I, I sort of apologize for the technical nature of that, but there is sort of a beleaguered history of this teleconferencing. Uh, suffice it to say, uh, uh, teleconferencing is available on kind of a relaxed methodology under the current Brown Act. Um, as it will exist on January 1st. However, there are some administrative burdens to using that tel- that relaxed teleconferencing, uh, procedures. Uh, at least for city council members and, and members of the boards and commissions. Uh, and so therefore, uh, if staff were asked, I think we'd probably recommend that we do away with that, uh, relaxed teleconferencing that's going to be available January 1st. And go back to kind of the old fashioned teleconferencing where boards, uh, board members and council members, uh, would post their location. Uh, if they're going to be teleconferencing in, uh, and we simply make arrangements through the city clerk's office, uh, to, uh, to post those, uh, remote locations. With regard to public comment, uh, as the staff report indicates, um, the recent, uh, kind of uptick in Zoom bombing is something that we think the council should be cognizant of. Uh, in terms of whether and to what extent the council wishes to make, um, teleconferencing or, or phone in, uh, public comment available to members of the public. So, um, that's really what's before you tonight is, is whether the council wants to continue, uh, with teleconferencing by city council members, uh, and board members. Uh, as well as teleconferencing or phoning in public comment for members of the public. I'm certainly available to answer any questions.
Do we have questions? Council, Mayor Protem DeHart.
You know, I think we appreciated, or I certainly appreciated the opportunity for teleconferencing, uh, during our COVID times. Um, but I, I think, uh, that this, it places too much administrative burden on our staff. Uh, to try and coordinate, um, at, uh, up to the last minute notice if there's a decision or a co- commission or council member's not able to attend a meeting. And then arrangements need to be made for that teleconferencing. Um, I, I agree with the staff recommendation, uh, that we should, uh, uh, do away from the teleconferencing option. And go back to, uh, how council and commissions operated, um, prior to COVID.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes, and I'm going to second, uh, uh, Mayor Protem DeHart's, uh, comments. Uh, and in part, uh, because we have very long history on this council of respecting one another. And if someone is unable to attend a meeting, uh, and that we do not, uh, uh, deliberate on issues that are critically important to, uh, that particular member. And I think we need to continue, uh, that tradition of ensuring that if something comes up, that, uh, if a council member asks that, uh, we defer an issue unless we absolutely, uh, must because of a timeframe that we do, uh, show that respect.
Councilmember Mayor Garner.
Thank you. Uh, I, I agree with that, but I do think that we should continue to allow the public to call in. Um, virtually, I think that's been very helpful for a lot of people and we, we have a, a decent mix. And so far it hasn't been a huge issue. Um, I think that staff, of course, should be able to do what they need to do to limit, um, last minute call-ins. So to the city clerk, if there's any i- issues there, um, if it needs to be a cutoff for virtual comments, I think that's appropriate. Just, just whatever, I wanted to revert to you to how to do that, um, so that it's, it's not too complicated.
Can I just clarify that the Zoom bombing issue is really if the whole thing is teleconferenced, but when we have. I mean, I know it has happened and I know that, like in general meetings, you can require registration. I don't know if we're legally allowed to do that.
I think it is more common when we are forced to do the Zoom, the Zoom option. Uh, it's not as common when we have telephone or where you have people register and, and we kind of verify their identity.
Yeah, so I, I would, I would go back to the pre-COVID, but I do think we should, I mean, we should always allow for call-in, um, public comment. As it's, it's just, it's a more equitable way for people to participate. Um, so do we have a motion to go back to the, I don't know how to say it, the, 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 the non-relaxed rules?
The pre-COVID.
The pre-COVID rules, but still allowing for call-in, uh, public comment.
Okay, and just to clarify, this would, uh, apply to the ci- other city boards and commissions as well as the council?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. Did you have any discussion?
So are, are our commission meetings, um, able to take call-ins? All the commission meetings can. How, how, how would I call in if I wanted to call in to measure J?
It would be the same procedure as you would for our meetings here. We give the same instructions that you can either call the city clerk's office or you can request the Zoom credentials. And then that way you call, you know, you're able to get into the meeting and we can allow you in to participate or make your comment or just watch.
And the agenda says that.
In the agenda.
It includes the phone number that members of the public can call if they want to provide public comment.
Oh, got it. So if, um, if there's no public comment requested, there's no Zoom meeting?
No, I don't think.
We would always have a Zoom meeting for everything.
I believe, is that what this is saying?
We would have, we'd have phone-in, uh, public comment. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be by Zoom, it would be by phone. Allow men, allowing members of the public to call in their public comment.
I believe you added a speaker phone at every meeting.
So we're still recording all of our meetings. You know, so, so even measure J would still be recorded and if there's no speakers, the meeting would still be recorded.
So the staff liaison would coordinate that speaker telephone call-in?
Correct.
For the meeting?
Correct.
Just, uh, Councilmember Holstage. Uh, my, my only other con- my comment was, are all the boards and commissions now shown live?
They're recorded, but they're not like, measure J is not live, but it's recorded. The AAB meetings are recorded, but they're not necessarily live streamed, but we do have recordings of all meetings.
Right, because for instance, the airport commission meets over at the airport, not over here where we have television.
Okay. But ideally, the ones here should be live so people can watch without having to wait, but. Councilmember Holstage?
Thank you. Um, because we did, I'm, I got to be the Zoom mayor. I was mayor when we were on Zoom. I think I did one in-person or two in-person meetings. Um, so we did at the time have Zoom telephone conferencing, the meetings, and people were able to give public comment in that Zoom room. We since haven't been doing Zoom meetings for council meetings or commission meetings, right?
We still do.
We still use.
We still use Zoom for public comment. You can, you can, we do the Zoom credentials. If you call and say you want to make public comment, we are using the Zoom webinar.
Got it.
To allow people to make comments. So the people that are coming in online are coming in online via Zoom.
Right, thank you. So really we have three ways to participate for the public. You can call in with a phone, you can, with advance notice, you can use Zoom, the Zoom webinar feature, or you can be in person. And that's, will stay the same if we move to adopt the traditional telephone conferencing rules?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's really important. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, I will say, I think none of these options are good. I wish, I think that going back to a more traditional model that really privileges only in-person for commissioners, for participants, for members of the public, um, is hard. It's an equity issue. I know my sister is on a commission for a different city and, you know, joined as a working person. And then, you know, to go back in person, um, might lead her to have to leave that commission. And so it's really a loss for diversity, equity, inclusion. Um, but I agree with the council that, um, AB 2449 is just sort of untenable to administer. Um, you know, I'm a parent of a young kid, you can hear me now, I'm getting over a cold, I think I were on day 14. Um, so it is a challenge for people who are exposed all the time, um, to, you know, then have to choose to be in person and expose other people. We not only have COVID, we have RSV, there's significant respiratory illnesses going around in our community. Um, so I just see that, just to the world, so that hopefully we will have a better AB, um, 2449 in the future. That we can really make this work, because I think it's such a loss to go back instead of actually look for the future of how we can do these integrated meetings. Um, but we are not the legislature, so we are picking among these three. And, um, I, I agree with the council, as long as we're preserving all of those in various options for the public to participate.
Yes, those won't change.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second on the table. And the motion passes five zero. Okay, the next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Our first speaker is Dr. Jesse Niemeyer Romero. Followed by Abraham Ishak.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Jesse Niemeyer Romero and I have lived here in the Coachella Valley for close to 16 years. And I've lived here in Palm Springs for over 10 and a half. I work in higher education and also teach at the collegiate level, uh, teaching government. I come to you today to comment on the resolution that was passed on October 12th. With a background in public administration, I question the wisdom of local governments, including this one. Passing resolutions and making public comment on international affairs and taking positions on foreign policy. In doing so, you have set a precedent and an expectation for yourselves and for your successors. The appropriateness in doing so is a debate that can be left settled at a later time. But it should be noted that other cities here in California. but it should be noted that other cities here in California have established policies and bylaws barring commentary on foreign affairs. But since you have set yourselves a precedent to be in the business of taking positions on international events, a follow-up resolution calling for a ceasefire needs to be proposed and adopted as soon as possible. The October 12th resolution recognizes the aspirations of the Palestinian people, but how are they going to reach those aspirations if there are no Palestinians, Palestinians left to work toward them? How are they going to have an independent state if there is no land for that independent state to inhabit? Innocent Palestinians are being killed or being left to die in a human-made humanitarian disaster that's being made worse every day. I urge this council to consider a follow-up resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire and the end to the bloodshed taking place right now in the Middle East. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abraham Ishak, followed by Brad Anderson. I'm sorry if I didn't mispronounce your name.
My name is Abraham. I am a resident and small business owner here in Palm Springs. I'm here to enlighten the council how a recently passed resolution diminishes our efforts related to Section 14. One state attorney general called Section 14 a "city-engineered Holocaust." At a time when black communities were being attacked across America, this city demolished black homes and forcibly moved the community into other areas of the desert. Even though none of us were directly involved in Section 14, today the city has chosen to take steps to right those wrongs and act in apologizing for the city's past actions. Surely, if we had been there, we would have condemned Section 14. So why then did the former Mayor Protem go out of his way to bring forward a resolution expressing our support to a foreign country that Human Right Watch, Amnesty International, and the UN have called out the crimes of apartheid, the highest form of racial segregation? And why did another city council second it while the rest of council stayed silent, allowing it to pass unanimously? Why? In a time for reflection and self-critique, has the council allowed yet another stain on the history of our city for future generations to look back upon with shame? Imagine if Section 14 were not a neighborhood, but an entire country, not a single event, but 75 years of exile, electrified fences, and house demolitions. Israel's goal is the same as that of Section 14, but on a grander scale, to pave over an entire community and put up settlements. The city council expressing its support for an apartheid state abroad and then trying to right the wrongs of white supremacy at home is the pinnacle of hypocrisy. As long as the council stands with segregation and apartheid, the city can never do justice to the victims of Section 14. I call upon the council to rescind the previously passed resolution and put forth a resolution that both condemns Israel's brutality and supports a ceasefire. To not do so would simply make Palm Springs complicit in Israel's war crimes and would reverse the city's progress over the last 60 years in becoming an inclusive and diverse community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brad Anderson.
I currently live in the city of Ansemraz. I wanted to speak on a few, actually, I submitted some email earlier this morning, hopefully you got it. I know I have issues getting things here or getting them seen on certain agenda items. And just to tell you a little story, I, I participate in Riverside County Board of Supervisors when I can, and sometimes I'm not able to drive over there, I have to call in, and, and I have to call Sacramento to do that. And that's my issue, I actually couldn't, I was cut off because I ran out of minutes on my cell phone, and I'm embarrassed because I waited all this time to talk and I wasn't, and I'm sure, I haven't reviewed the footage, but I'm sure they were looking for me, and that's, you know, that's inconsiderate of myself. But again, that's an issue too, when people do call in these meetings, they have to call along, there's a phone number out of the area, and, and if you could adjust that, that would be great for, for the people that can't attend in person. But I'm, I'm all, I've been saying this all along with A B 361, and I know the city has failed every aspect of that with social distancing, and all the aspects of 30-day requirement, and I'm glad it's coming in. I think the city council and especially appointed or board members need to be in person, because I don't want to say I can't trust everybody, but there is a trust factor there, and we have to know how the elected or appointed positions are being, I guess, well, we have to monitor those positions as a public. And 2449, yes, I think you should implement that, and you can, especially if you're doing remote meetings anyway, for, for the people that can't make it in person sometimes, because it does happen, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No further comment. Well, we have one online, I'm sorry. We have one online. He should be on your speaker card. The name is Francis Fernandez. Francis Fernandez, you have two minutes.
There?
She's, we can't hear anything. She's on Zoom. I don't, we would have to call. You call her?
Okay. Hello, my name's Francis Fernandez, and I'm a senior public affairs specialist with South Coast Air Quality Management District. We're reaching out to encourage everyone to submit a nomination for our upcoming Clean Air Awards to recognize organizations or individuals who have made contributions to cleaning our air. For over three decades, South Coast HQMD has honored those across the region who have helped improve the air we breathe. So we ask that if you know any clean air leaders in categories such as government, public health, environmental justice, innovative technology, youth, and education, just to name a few, please show them the love and support with a Clean Air Award nomination. Nominees can include individuals, groups, and organizations, and the nomination deadline is next month on January 19. You can find out more about our 34th annual Clean Air Awards and submit your nominations by visiting hqmd.gov/CAA. That's CAA for Clean Air Awards. We're looking forward to seeing your nominees, your nominee submissions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No further comments.
Okay. The next item is city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. City manager, please provide your report.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do want to mention, this will be our final council meeting of the year before we go into the new year, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention, I had said to Councilmember Garner earlier in the week, it was just a great honor for me to serve personally under her leadership as mayor during the past year. We talked specifically, I was still pretty new when Hurricane Hillary hit, and her work, working with us, all of the interviews, all the work we did to kind of help lead the community through that was, was really amazing, and I really appreciated your leadership during that time. I know I also speak on behalf of all the city employees and myself, congratulating Mayor Bernstein on your appointment and Mayor Protem DeHart on your appointment. I'm really excited about 2024. We have a ton of things that are going to be happening. We are going to be really busy, but I'm really excited about it, so I'm looking forward to it. As we look forward, you can see we have four business items at our next meeting on January 11th. We will be talking about some amendments, potential amendments to the Palm Springs disposal agreement. I know they want to do a lot of fleet modernization and bringing their fleet up to green standards. We'll be talking about that. Councilmember Garner had requested that we bring back the automated license plate reader cameras by private entities. We'll be prepared to talk a little bit about that. And then the topic that we spent some time earlier this evening, library renovation project development, we're doing a lot of work on that right now. So our library manager, our finance department, we will be back talking about the financing strategy to keep that project moving, and it's moving rapidly, so we'll have a lot of good information for you on that project, as well as an update to the College Park specific plan, which I think got started some years ago, and we're ready to have our planning staff talk more about that. And then our second meeting in January, you've asked us for an update on the college of the desert, we'll be talking about that. Our airport manager wants to give us an update and presentation on the airport master plan. They're doing a lot of work there, we're hitting some benchmarks that we want to share with you. And finally, we'll be talking a little bit about the cannabis ordinance and some minor modifications to that work as well. So that's it for the coming month. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Does the council have any requests? Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. I'm not sure if all of council knows, but Visit Greater Palm Springs has been working on autism certification, and they really want our region to be a region that has these certifications, and they're looking for cities to become autism certified. What they're asking for right now is for Parks and Rec specifically to do this, there's also requests for the airport and then public safety, and my request is just if we can, if there's support for looking into what it would take to do that, and then possibly beyond those, those departments, but at least to start looking into what's possible. And as you heard, you know, we do have a young gentleman that has autism that comes to all of our council meetings, and so I think that we are seeing that this is something that's needed in our area, and it would be great to be the, the city that leads the region on this. I second that request. Thank you.
I agree, and I actually took the autism course there, and it's excellent, and I think I, there may be a financial commitment from the city to go through the process, but...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and to the council members, we've done some preliminary research on it, and there are some potential monetary costs. We've had some, some ideas how they reduce costs for nonprofits and for local governments as opposed to businesses, so we'll be happy to bring back a report to you, just detailing what some of those time costs, time and training costs might be. But we've, we've done a little bit of work on this already, so we'll work, we'll be working on that.
Can I ask that you include in that whether there's options for the city to support any of our area businesses and attractions who may not have done this?
Certainly.
I think the more that we have that are certified, the better. Any other requests? The next regular city council meeting will be held on Thursday, January 11th, 2024, at 5:30 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.